This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for Thursday, April 30th, for the fiscal year 2021 budget. We'll start by rising for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughlin?
Here.
Marone? Morganstein?
Here.
Chertelle?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Dandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni? Yes, who's that?
This is Joe Marone. Sorry, I couldn't get to my mute button quick enough.
Oh, my. We got you. Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Jimboz?
Present.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm just gonna go through the instructions. I know we've done a few of these, but there's a few members of the public I see who have not participated in prior meetings. Members of the public, please keep your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also, please keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through and be heard or recorded at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a gavel. I have a mute all button. So if there are multiple conversations going on, or there's extraneous conversation going on, I'm going to mute all and figure out how to solve the problem. I will now proceed to go through the departments on the list tonight. First, the council will have the opportunity to ask questions. And then I'll go to the public. With respect to the public, first, I will go to those who have logged in using a computer or a portable electronic device. And then after that, I'll deal with those who have dialed in on an analog telephone. And Madam Clerk, if you could just note, it looks like Councilor Testa just logged on.
Thank you.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right, our first department tonight is the police department. Chief Wright, I see you're here. Oh, the other thing. Members of the public, anybody who starts speaking for the benefit of maintaining the record, please identify yourself. Please say your name and your address. Thank you. Chief Wright, if you'd like to make some introductory remarks, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the police department, I'm here with Deputy Chief John Ventura and my executive assistant, Beth DeGallo. And the police department's budget proposal, as presented to you, reflects an apparent, or an approximate, rather, four tenths of one percent increase over the current appropriation, or what equals to be roughly about $33,000 in real money. The salaries and wages component of our budget reflects an approximate .6 tenths of one percent reduction. The police union is under contract and is doing a 1.85% contractual raise. The management union and the clerical union are both in contract negotiation now, so there is no increase for those two units. In the past two budget cycles, I've asked for and have received permission and approval for additional staffing. I am not asking for additional manpower in this budget request. Other than the 1.8% increase for the police union across all of the lines reflective in their wages, I'm not asking for any increases in any other lines. In fact, I've budgeted for an approximately 6% reduction in overtime. Now, I will tell you that with the cancellation of the 350th celebration parade, we would have fallen into, here at the police department, the last pay period in this current fiscal year for that parade. I did not budget any money into this appropriation, or this proposal for wages for the parade. So I just want that to be known. The operating and maintenance component of our budget represents an approximate 15.2% increase. This is due to a number of different reasons, primarily which is the new townwide radio system. We'll need an approximate five months of coverage after the warranty period expires. In that line alone reflects an approximate 107% increase. Where we can and where we always do, we look to cut wage, or cut lines to reduce our overall expenses, certainly in operating and maintenance. The capital segment of our budget reflects an approximate 21% decrease over the current fiscal year appropriation. A couple of highlighted components of our capital request. Our body worn cameras for our workforce. And a new gasoline management system for our fuel tank that's outside. It's continually in a state of failure. Although we're able to get gas, we can't track from time to time how many gallons are in the tank, or how many gallons we're pumping. And other than that, the rest of our capital requests are typically those that we ask for annually. This is our, actually, fourth and final year of payment to NextGen Public Safety Solutions for the software. So that will be that last $70,000 amount of money to NextGen. And the rest of it is for replacement of laptops and desktops and things that we typically replace every year. There is no money appropriated in this budget for cruisers for a whole host of reasons, including GM going on strike and now the COVID shutdown of plants and a few other reasons. We have not expended any of the money in this current fiscal year's cruiser appropriation. And I requested and received permission from the mayor to carry that money forward into next year. So I will have that $140,000 worth of cruiser capital to spend in 2021. And I'll take your questions, sir.
Thank you, Chief. For those who want to ask questions, of course, I'm going to the council first. The chat bar, you access it by clicking the comic icon, the speech bubble icon, and type your comment in there. So at this point, I'm looking for questions for the police department from the council. And instead of chat bar comments, I'm seeing people put hands in front of their faces. The first hand in front of her face I saw was Councilor Morganstein. So, Councilor Morganstein, you have the floor. And I just remind you to be patient with each other and to not speak over each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Wright. So I, certainly in this budget year, as many of my fellow councilmen are looking to have a flat year with a zero increase to our taxpayers. And I had thought of asking everyone, you know, where is your hierarchy of what's your most important, least important? But as you mentioned, there are several things that you already are not doing. And I certainly know full well that you're not doing it if it's not important. So I'm just gonna ask you with this, we're giving you the money for the vehicles, although the vehicles are not available for you in this budget season. So that money will sit in your budget unspent, $140,000, until next year's budget?
Yes, we're going to request to carry that forward. We did go to bid for a 2020 cruiser. And the combination of both GM going on strike and the fact that it was gonna be a short order window anyway, because GM is retooling their factory for 2021. The bids opened and the factory had stopped already making cruisers. So we don't have any new coming into the fleet this year. We continue to run the full fleet every day. So we're very nervous about that. Because it will be another full budget cycle as far as cars go until the new build sheets come out in the fall and we're able to go to bid again.
So we're not waiting to order this as long as they're available to be made for you until our next budget season? We're simply waiting until what time it becomes available to you, and you're hoping that that's the fall?
Yes, typically for police fleet builds, the build sheets will come out in April or May. And once the budget gets loaded with, typical from year to year, once the budget gets loaded with the monies that we've requested, then we go to bid. And typically by the time, because nothing is built unless it's ordered, right? So there's not like sitting anywhere. And by the time they're built and delivered, it's typically early spring. It'll be, you know, hopefully not, but almost a year from now before those new cars land here.
Even if you were ordering it now?
Yes, even if I could.
Wow, okay. And so how many vehicles is $140,000?
We're hopeful to buy three.
Okay. And so will your order be in place kind of as a holding? Or you'll have to just wait until they allow opening for ordering?
I have to wait until the build sheets come out and, because they're coded, right? And they, for whatever reason, change the codes every year. So until I know what the codes are for the components, I can't order them yet, and they haven't come out yet.
Okay. And then this gas pump not being able to record how much gas you're actually pumping, does that present any sort of a problem with you ordering more in time or keeping track financially? Or is it just sort of annoying?
We've developed a workaround.
Okay.
Yeah, we're okay.
We do that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much, sir.
Next is Counselor Fishbein. And I just remind you all to be careful about talking over each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for keeping us safe, as always. Just a very general question. You know, your budget was put in before the COVID situation. And, you know, how has that, if at all, affected your budget? And if you had the magic wand, would you have some modification to this budget as a result of that situation?
No, I don't have a magic wand. I will tell you that, interestingly enough, as this issue relates to law enforcement, and certainly our department specifically. Our partners, as you know full well, know that our partners in fire and public health have been out front in the lead on this issue from day one. So we took drastic action here early on, probably seven weeks ago, or maybe more, to keep our workforce healthy, right? So I've had one officer who's been COVID positive. He's just back this week after being off for a month. So we took drastic action early on to keep our workforce healthy. And I could go on for an hour about all the things that we've done to keep them healthy, and knock on wood, it's worked. We've worked with both the police bargaining unit and the town's administration to come up with a drastic schedule change that we're ready to implement should we have to, to get them more time off and away from the possibility of getting sick. We haven't had to do that yet. We're healthy, knock on wood. We're all here. So as it relates to the budget, Craig, all of the grant funded opportunities that we typically take part in in the spring, seatbelt enforcement, cellphone enforcement, DUI enforcement, has all gone by the wayside. All of the public programs that we typically reach out to the community in the spring have all gone by the wayside. We've collapsed all of our operations into actually triaging calls for service over the phone now, which is absolutely something we hate doing, because we do pride ourselves on getting to each and every call for service with a uniformed police officer at your home, or wherever you are, wherever you need us, right? So never did I think that there'd come a day that there's an actual stop sign in front of our door, asking people to please call us from the parking lot, if you can, if it's certainly an emergency, come into the building. And all of that seemingly has worked, right? I will tell you that this is an absolute seat of the pants response. We've never gone through this. But everything that we've done and all the work that the workforce has done to keep themselves healthy is apparently working. And I guess we'll take that. So our budget, you know, we're sitting on overtime money. We're tracking wages actually right where we should be. We're fully staffed. Minus one vacancy, that's an officer's gonna start with us in June. So the wages are tracking right where they should. But the other lines, vacation and sick replacement, running heavy on because no one is taking any vacation, I guess because there's nowhere to go. And we're all here. The workforce is coming to work every day. So sick time is almost nonexistent, but certainly also is overtime. As soon as their shifts are done, we're doing the thing we can to shove them out the door to get them home and away from here, understandably. And I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, no, it's more than I asked, and I'm very happy that you gave me more than I asked, because I learned something. So that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next is Counselor Tada.
Hi, Chief. Did you call on me, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
I was hitting on you. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
Just one question in light of what you just said about the, you know, potentially saving on some overtime. If you were potentially to try to find 1% in this budget to cut from what the mayor's proposed amount, do you think that would be a hardship for your department to try to find 1% in savings? The one thing that really stood out to me was the body cameras. That that could be somewhere we could maybe save, or kind of use some of the savings and overtime towards. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
So 1% of our budget is roughly a little bit more than $100,000. And I can tell you, Christina, that we are stripped to the bone as it is. We've kept everything as tight as we can, knowing even before this COVID issue that this was gonna be a tough budget year. I can't speak for what might be left at the end of this current fiscal year. So while we are carrying some more money than we typically do in those overtime lines, I don't know exactly what that might look like on June 30th. But I can tell you, if it continues to track like it is now, there will be a sum of money there, barring any unforeseen circumstances, such as a major crime or a run on crime. So to cut another $100,000 from what I've proposed, I don't know where I would get that.
Okay. And the other question you had mentioned before about the parade, how that was, would have been quarter four of this year, and you didn't budget for it. So that money will, I assume, will just be sitting there. And then if it does, if it does go on in September, as we're hoping now, you would just be carrying that over and using it next year?
No, I have not budgeted for that, because the budget was, my budget was set anyway and turned into Mayor Dickinson prior to the parade being canceled. So as we roll into a new fiscal year, the way I think we're approaching it is, should the parade happen, I very well may need to come back to the council roughly maybe this time next year, looking for an appropriation either from contingency or out of another line in my own budget to backfill that overtime line where we spent it on the parade and didn't budget for it, not knowing that this was gonna be in front of us.
Okay. All right, and thank you for everything you do for us. And that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next is Counselor Chertelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Chief Wright.
Good evening.
Just a few quick questions. And the first one, you may have sort of answered this with Councilor Morganstein's question, so I apologize if you did. The cruisers, the $140,000 in this budget, there's also in appropriations enforced on page 89, an additional $155,597,000. So, and it's labeled cruisers vehicle. So I'm just trying to reconcile. I know appropriations enforced is the same type. It's money that we already taxed. We're not retaxing it, but we're earmarking it for a specific larger expenditure. And I just am trying to reconcile, is that all going to the same cruisers? Are there more cruisers? And if you answered this already, I was a little distracted before, so if you answered it, I apologize, but...
No, not a problem at all. So, and maybe Jimboz can weigh in. I'm only aware, Counselor Chertelle, of the current $140,000 that I have right now. I'm not aware of another line enforced for $155,000. I don't know if Jim might be able to help me out.
Yes. Chris, that number that you're seeing on page 89, appropriations enforced, is the $140,000 that the chief is explaining. Plus, he's got $15,000 left right now from the current year appropriation that has not yet been spent. What we do is, before the mayor's budget is due to the council, we had conversations with various department heads and, hey, which ones do you need, which ones do you don't? And maybe a brief explanation as to why. And that $15,000, certainly cruisers sometimes need, you know, have more expenses, you know, light bars and PC setups and stuff like that. So I don't know if the, when in doubt, I bring something like that into the mayor's budget, recommended budget to go before you folks, because we could always reduce it at your level. When we move through this process, before the council actually has to make a decision on the budget, we go back through these appropriations enforced line items that are on page 89 of your budget book. And we update them, if you will, in the council column. And we send those out to you, so you get a better look at that point in time as to where we are with them. If at that point in time, the chief only needs $140,000 or some other amount, then you'll see a revision in that council, I'm sorry, in the council line, council column.
All right, yeah. I thank you for that explanation. That does clear most of it up. So Chief, then, let me, not to nitpick, but when you say $140,000 for the new cruisers, is that inclusive of all, to use Counselor Fishbein's favorite new word, accoutrements that the cruisers may need? Is that inclusive of all of that, or do you need the other $15,000, do you think?
No, we're gonna need that other $15,000, because the GM is a new build with the, and this is what I think, when I came before you, what I told you last year drives me absolutely crazy, is every time the manufacturer changes the style or the model, most of the gear that we have won't fit. And typically, from year to year, we're able to make it go. In this case, I'm gonna need to outfit three cars with just about, what we think is gonna be about 90% of the load of gear that we currently are carrying in our other cruisers, unfortunately.
Got it. Understood. Thank you for that. Two more questions. The, you mentioned you're not looking for any additional staff in this budget. We've added, I think, four officers the last two budgets. Are those officers, do we have them? Are they out of the academy? Are they hired? They're all, they're here?
Yep. I have one vacancy for an officer that's starting in June.
And we're gonna hire for that?
Yep, he's all set to go.
All set to go. Okay, great. I guess my last question is, in a sense, the inverse of the question Counselor Tada asked you. So I wanna ask you, do you have what you need? I think that, I understand your boss is on the phone too, and I understand that we're in a crisis. But I also worry, you know, do you have, from a public safety perspective, if you could wave a magic wand and, you know, is there, you know, this crisis will pass. And I know you, Chairman Savoni had sent us a memo early on, and you had expressed to him, and he said to us how, you know, things were kind of quiet, because people are inside. And so certainly, there's a, I would imagine, there's a dip. But this is gonna pass, and things will go back to normal. Do you have what you need? Because before this hit, we were, you know, we had car break-ins. And I just wanna make sure that you're not afraid to ask for what you need, despite the optics of it in a crisis like this. I guess that's my, that's my question.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question, and we're gonna be fine. There's always a wish list of things that you might want. But we have everything that we need to properly provide public safety for the community. To your point about break-ins of cars, yes, it has increased again. But we've responded to that with additional staffing on the overnight shift. I don't wanna get into a lot of what we're doing, but suffice to say, we've added significant levels of increased staffing on the overnight shift. And what I'm really hopeful happens sooner rather than later is, we are potentially, well, more than potentially, we will be the recipient of some, what I call, significant levels of asset forfeiture money from work that one of our officers did while assigned to the DEA. And it just takes a long, long time for that to make its way through the system. But I'm hopeful that some of that lands during the next fiscal year, the budget that we're talking about tonight. And I very well may be able to backfill with a few more cars. I mean, it's limited what you can use those funds for, but certainly vehicles is one of them. And if I can, you know, I really, I really truly need, I will need by this time next year, a good six or seven cars. That $140,000, I'm hopeful to get three. But I'm hopeful to kind of backfill some of that expense for more cruisers with some of that asset forfeiture money. But I can't count on it, because it's just, I don't have any control over when it might land here.
Thank you. I actually do have one more question. Sorry, I thought of it while you were talking. And this, I swear, this is my last question. It's not about your budget, but I'm more curious if you've been consulted or involved. There are two items in the Public Works budget around townwide security upgrades at town buildings in the last five years. There was expenditure in the 1718 budget of $50,000, and $250,000 in the 1819. I didn't, I just wanna, I know you, I don't wanna talk about what those enhancements specifically were for obvious reasons necessarily, but I'm just, at a broad level, have you been involved in that? Are you consulting on that? Can you talk about that at all without compromising those enhancements?
We've been asked to be intimately involved in that, and we have been. So the first component of that multi-phase project was to improve the ability of Town Hall employees to send emergency messages or others through an intercom system, which was, which is currently in place now. It's been installed. In order to, that required a complete revamp of the phone system in Town Hall, which was a big lift, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot going on there with phones, right? So that went out to bid. It's been installed. It's done. The next component of that multi-phase improvement will be for the ability of offices in Town Hall to remotely both lock the door to the office right from the desk. And also, when that happens, that will trigger a panic alarm, which will ring directly here at the police department to give us notice that that's happened. So a lot of work has gone on into that, because the mechanisms on the doors and the construction of the doors all needs to be taken into account to make sure that that remote locking mechanism will work on each door that it's installed on. And, you know, like any building, anywhere, I don't know that there's two of the same doors in Town Hall, much like there's not two of the same doors here. So the town's current alarm company specializes to some extent in this work and has been... Alarm company specializes to some extent in this work and has been. A partner with Bill Salato over at Public Works, working throughout the building to make some sense of. What kind of a bit spec are we gonna need to go out to get that phase done?
Thank you, I appreciate that update. Thanks for everything you and your department does to keep us safe.
It's our honor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Chief. I, when you're talking about cruisers, you keep mentioning GM. Are we going away from forward? Is that what's happening?
Yes, we are. Yeah. Our intent was to purchase one Tahoe in this current fiscal year. Upfit it with everything we think we'd need. There's some options there. That GM offers that we wanted to take advantage of to try to reduce our overhead costs and labor to build the car once we receive it. We did go to bid, the bid opened, and when we awarded it, we were told that the factory had now ceased production of. The twenty-twenty's because they were retooling the factories for twenty-twenty-one. And then GM went on strike and. Here we are, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next up, Counselor Testa.
Thank you, I couldn't reach the button, sorry about that.
Hi, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, sir, I'm fine, how are you?
Moving my book around, I lost my page, but it doesn't matter. I, I think I got confused. In between two different people's questions to you. The approximately, well, the money you were referring to. For the overtime for anticipated expenses to cover the parade, what's the dollar amount of that roughly?
Roughly thirty thousand.
Oh, okay. I don't, I have no question about that. And the, the money you're speaking of, I was a little confused. On your general page. Where it says new police vehicles, you requested two hundred thousand, nothing was approved, but then there's the one forty-nine. Is the one forty-nine in or out?
It's in this current budget cycle we're in right now, current appropriation.
Book we're looking at.
Yep.
There, it's in there.
It's gonna carry, it's gonna carry forward.
That's the, that's the part that I'm a little fuzzy about. So, the budget we are looking at and approving does not have money for vehicles in it.
No, sir.
There was two hundred thousand, that was denied.
Correct.
In the current budget in which we find ourselves. There's, I'm gonna throw rough numbers, one fifty. You have not been able to spend because you can't buy the cars.
Right.
So, you figure you can buy the cars at some point during the next budget year. With the money that you currently have in this year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, this is really, this is less a question for you. And more a question for the mayor and the controller. When you say we could carry it over. Is that because it would be in a, well, you could answer this maybe, because it will stay in appropriations enforced? Which can be spent over a number of years? Or is in effect, it's money that's not gonna be spent and will be used next year? In other words, so maybe the controller can answer that. Where would the money go? Does it go into the, in the appropriations enforced? And I missed it, and I apologize if I did.
No problem, Councilman. At the end of this fiscal year, when we're closing out the books. The hundred and forty thousand, let's say, in the police budget for that. Will basically lapse. Okay? But now, if the council approves that. Among the appropriations enforced. That becomes what, it's a designation of our fund balance, is what it is. It's called assigned fund balance.
I understand that.
That's, that's where.
Well, that, and that's where.
On page eighty-nine of the, of the budget.
Yes. I guess I just wanted to clarify. That, speaking of it, as. Carrying over as a foregone conclusion is a little. Preemptive. In other words, it's because it still has, it's something that has to be approved at some point down the road. In order for that money to not just lapse into the reserve fund, but to be determined to be an appropriation. Enforced. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are. If you do not approve that line for, as the appropriation enforced. And the chief gets no cards at all next year. Oh, it's not. It's not. A done deal. It's up to the council to approve it.
Right. Well, I think it's just important everybody to understand that, because, because I was thinking, how are you gonna carry it over? And pay, and use it next year? As we stand today, it will still require action down the road. By the council, so we should be aware of that. Correct?
Actually, no. Action, yes, but not down the road. When we come with the motions for a budget approval night. That is one of the motions that the vice chair, in this case, Mr. Lappin, is, will normally be reading. To approve. By that point in time, as I explained a little bit before, we will have that column in the council column adjusted. As the calendar has moved along from when the mayor's budget was due. April one, up through probably the week prior to your meeting, which I believe right now is tentatively scheduled for. May twenty-sixth. So, that will be one of the motions that's made. To, in the budget adoption meeting, which we have done, I think we started that, maybe. Twelve years or so, give or take. So, it is a future action, yes, but it's part of the budget actions.
That was my first question. I didn't, I didn't present it clearly enough. They, and that's why, that's why they're listed on page eighty-nine.
Correct.
That's the money we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, I, just a couple of questions. I'm on, I'm on page thirty of the budget book, so my first question is. Line of fifty-one thousand nine hundred other pay. Can you just kind of define for me what that other pay is?
So, by the, the contract, certainly with the police union, if they don't use any sick time. During the calendar year or during the fiscal year, depending on when they were hired, there's a couple of different formulas for us to use. They receive a stipend, the money for that. Also, the dispatchers by their contract are granted a meal allowance for working over a certain number of hours, so that's including. Included in there. Longevity for, actually, the police union, the clerical union, and the management union are also. Included in there. And then the police union has a benefit in their contract for degree allowance if. If members of the bargaining unit acquire a certain level of degree, whether it's a. Associates, bachelors, or masters, they're due a stipend, the money for that. And that's where that money comes from. That's what other pay is.
Okay, and you're, you're showing right now, or at least, you know, the budget book's got the column there for. Up till the end of January, you're, you're almost out of money in there for what you originally appropriated. I assume you're not. The way you paid this out, you're all right for the remainder of this budget, and you're, you're not planning to go over that.
Yes.
And, and, and then that, then that line's pretty consistent, crosswise, going to, so my. My next question is in the next section down on line fifty-three thousand one hundred. So. When I look at your allocation for fuel and diesel, it looks like you're tracking, you know, the line there shows sixty thousand consumed. If, if that were to continue forward, it looks like it's tracking about one oh-two against your appropriation of one fifteen, and. You've got it lower for the request. Is, is it lower from the request based on? Your tracking this year, or, or is it, did you lower the ask because of the decrease in fuel prices?
Yes, exactly. The decrease in price. We're burning about the same amount of gallons, pretty close to fifty thousand gallons a year. But the reduction in price as set by the purchasing department lets us realize that reduction.
All right, and, and you, you're comfortable with the math? I mean, they, they reduced it by, looks like about almost sixteen thousand, but. Based on, like, where fuel is right now, and it's continuing direction, you're comfortable you'll have enough there?
Yes, so we're locked in for next year. Now, I have to be bluntly honest with you, I don't know if that's subject to change or not. I don't have that experience. So, we're currently locked in for next year at a dollar eighty-eight a gallon.
So, it doesn't matter where it goes?
I think it's locked in there. Now, I don't know if that's subject to change. Because of the dramatic reduction in the price per gallon right now, but that's the amount of money. That came, the, the price per gallon that came over to us to use as computation.
Okay, and so, based on, based on your response then, if it suddenly went to four dollars a gallon because they, they stopped all the production. You shouldn't be negatively impacted then either.
Correct.
Okay, good enough. All right, thanks a lot.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, I have another question from Counselor Tada.
Hi again, sorry, Chief, there was something I saw that I meant to ask about. Also on page thirty, line four, five, four, three, two, five, maintenance of equipment. Can you just explain what's in there? It looks like there's a pretty drastic jump from this year to next year, and there was a. Another substantial jump from the prior year, so can you just explain what's. What's included in that line for me?
Sure, so the drastic jump there is for that five-year, excuse me, that five-month. Bridge contract for our new townwide radio system for the maintenance, so that, that's a hundred and seven percent more than we're carrying this year. And the balance of the increases there are just for. Servers and switches and things that over time. Just age and to carry a maintenance protection program against that. It typically costs just a little bit more each year. But there's nothing new in there that we haven't budgeted for in prior years. It's just that that radio system is. Gonna be substantially more because it covers the whole town versus just the police department. And the aging of some of our other electronic equipment.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. And then the other, the only other line I wanted to ask about was. The crossing guards, which is five, six, seven, three, eight. It looks like there was. A bit of a jump there too. Is that, is that just pay increases, or what does that entail?
So, we're budgeting for what will be year one in a new three-year bid. So, we work closely with the transportation department over at the Board of Ed. The posts stay pretty static year over year. So, we were at the end of our contract with the crossing guard company, we went back out to bid, actually, we went back out to bid twice. The first. Bid came back with no bidders, which made us very, very nervous, because there are. Twenty, eighteen to twenty posts a day, and I don't have the officers to cover that, so. Purchasing went right back out, and we were able to get a, actually, it's the same company, they're from California. And that's really all the company does is crossing guard services. So, it's the first year of a new three-year bid.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
All right, before I go out to the public, any questions from, more questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a question, but as a response, Chief. Counsel Tada had asked you about the body cams and. You know, I know that it wouldn't be in your budget unless you thought it was important. And, you know, sometimes things happen. In town without us. Knowing, and I just want to let you know that I'm in favor of the body cams. I think that they protect the officer. They protect the accused sometimes. And I think in this age, and certainly I see a lot of it in Hartford, there's a lot of. Clings that are made, and I think that they are helpful to both sides, and I applaud you as well as other. Towns that are shifting to that new technology, so, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just a reminder for members of the public participating. The system does not allow multiple voices to be heard at the same time. It picks one voice, so. Please wait for your question to be answered before you, don't talk over each other. It'll chop up the conversation in the recording. With that, I have a question from Mr. Commerford.
This is the first time I'm using this, so hopefully you can hear me. Can you hear me? Yes, sir. Yes, Chief, it's more of a minutia kind of question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Commerford, leave me an address for the record, please.
Yes, five Broadview Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. Chief, Simpson Court has been brought up for decades as far as. Possibly redoing the parking lot and so forth, and I'm just curious as to if you might know how many. As a guesstimate, how many tickets or the value of tickets in thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars. That were issued for the illegal parking violations in Simpson Court area. Since you became chief.
I don't have the exact dollar amount. We are continually in Simpson Court on parking violations. I'll be honest with you that as of late, or certainly as this COVID thing came along, you can park just about anywhere you want uptown, unfortunately, so. I don't have an exact dollar amount, Mr. Commerford. I can run that report for you. I don't know necessarily. If we can dial it in specifically to Simpson Court. I would think maybe we can. Although I don't want to promise you something that I can't deliver, but we could look at it.
And I appreciate that. The, the reason being is because Public Works is coming up shortly thereafter, and I believe in my opinion. That there's been a big push for the town to spend hundreds of thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars at Simpson Court. Behind it, and there's been, it's been well documented that they stated that the police don't enforce. The public parking limit and then area, so if that, if that is the case, then that would have some type of bearing on that, and that's why I was kind of. You know, interested in, in those numbers. In other words, if people aren't moving off of that mark, meaning the Simpson Court area. Then it would have an impact on the parking behind, so I would love to have that information, and I appreciate the follow-up with that. I appreciate it.
Sure, we'll, we'll develop what we can, and I'll have our records commander get it to you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Commerford was able to let me know that he wanted to speak by typing in the chat bar. Any other members of the public like to speak? As I'm looking through the list of participants, I don't see any telephone participants. And it appears that, Chief, there are no further questions for you, and I thank you for. All you and your department are doing, you know, typically, you're, you're doing a regular job. Lately, you've got some new duties and. It's changed, and I also want to thank you for the work that you're doing for the council in light of what happened on Tuesday night.
It's our honor.
Thank you very much, and you're all set. Fire. Chief Hyde Guard. If you. Would like, you could begin with an introduction, just let me know.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few thoughts. This budget reflects the restructuring of the fire department. With a new response and staffing model with the EMTs that we're hiring, and with that, there's no historical data to look at the cost of payroll. So, they're just based on the best projections, projections possible. We also have a two percent contractual raise within the entire bargaining unit. Large capital purchases, one was pushed off, was the pumper. Um, large capital purchases, uh, one was uh pushed off was the pumper. But the other two large ones is an ambulance replacement, which is replacing a two thousand seven ambulance that we bought used, actually. And it has over two hundred thousand miles, so that's why that's being replaced. And the SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus on the capital side, uh, it's a substantial purchase, but those air packs, um, if you will, it's like you might as well be on the moon when you're in an ideal H atmosphere. Uh, obviously, the firefighters depend on those as a life-saving device as they're breathing in smoke and heated gases and whatnot. Those air packs that's being replaced are uh twenty years old, three revision cycles, and it's similar to the conversation about computers in that they're unsupported. So the manufacturer is no longer supplying repairs or parts for those air packs that we currently have. So it's a uh it's a substantial uh risk not moving forward with that. With that said, we do have a assistance for firefighters grant application in. It's competitive grant. But we're looking to get funding from the uh federal government in that grant process for those air packs as well. Um, with that, our EMS system continues to be stressed as much low recently as ever. And um we're moving forward with the per or the restaffing of those two ambulances. We do have in this budget the funding for two ambulances on a twenty-four-hour staffed basis, which is an increase from one daytime um and one uh twenty-four-hour truck. So with that, I will uh answer any questions you have.
Questions from the counselor. I don't see anything in the chat bar right now. Counselor Tata.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Um, I have about the SCBA. I just have a question about how it appears. Um, so I'm on pages thirty-five and thirty-six. It looks like it appears in three different um line items. So there's five, seventy, three, five. Then there's five, seven, seven, three, three, and then it's also listed under new. Can you just explain why it's why it's in three line items?
Sure. Last year, we we continuously buy air packs. It's one of the items that uh either they get the damaged and unrepairable. Um, so it's it's a it's a line item that we often are either doing maintenance on air packs. They have to be flow-tested on an annual basis. That means that they're uh they're tested for functionality. So there's an ongoing maintenance cost. You'll see that cost as well as we purchased them in incremental years. So wholesale, because the older air packs are not compatible with the new air packs, that's why we're going for the large replacement of fifty air packs. Right now, we have seventy-six total air packs on hand. The purchase that you see as the large capital item, the four hundred ninety-seven thousand, is only for fifty-one air packs. So although we are reducing the amount of air packs we have, the prior uh prior purchases, we still are retaining those.
Okay, so the so those other the other two line items are for the the ones you have and then the maintenance on them?
I believe so. Looking, uh, it looks like last year's budget was one of the ones you referenced.
Yes, yeah, like five, seventy, three, five, correct?
Correct, yeah. And we will, we are still saving. Those are still in service.
Okay, perfect. Um, and my other question for you. Are you, I always, I would assume your answer is no, um, but are you saving anything during the during this pandemic? Is it, are you, do you have, I'm assuming you have additional costs due to this? So can you just um speak to that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're moving monies around because we are spending a lot more money uh than what we had anticipated. And thanks the council greatly, uh, Mayor and the council for supporting us and buying PPE. We're shifting monies around into our operating fund. You've seen and actually have supported some of those transfers as we continuously are looking to buy either medical uh supplies, uh, personal protective equipment, or other things that are uh impacting our budget right now. So uh, yes, there is no money left as a in this present budget.
Yeah, and I I assume at this point you don't know how how much extra this is all costing you because it's still ongoing?
Uh, correct. As a matter of fact, some of the requests that we've had for emergency purchases of PPE, that is around the seventy-five thousand dollar range. So we have, the town has received through the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act, received a check for thirty-nine thousand dollars to offset some of those costs. And we do have uh one of our lieutenants that's been detailed to collecting documentation for the entire town, all town departments for a FEMA reimbursement. So we're hoping that the town will be reimbursed for all these new costs, uh, but we are incurring those costs as we move forward.
Sure. Um, and also, I neglected to thank you in the beginning for everything that you and your department's doing because I'm I'm sure this is very difficult time for all of you, so thank you for that. Um, and also, and this is not um unique to your department. I also asked the police department if if you were asked to try to save one percent of your next of your budget for um going into next year. Um, would that be a a huge hardship to you? Um, one of the things that stuck out to me possibly was the um, the capital request for a forty-five thousand dollar um SUV. It says the the current one is seven years old. Um, do you think there's potentially one percent that you could find to save?
Uh, that vehicle that you mentioned was actually cut uh by the mayor, so that's already been taken off um as the budget that you see from Mayor Dickinson moving forward. Um, I don't think we'll have one percent to cut without reducing services in that we generally come in with a budget surplus around the one percent mark, and that's due to a a good year weather-wise. We are affected as Public Works is with weather and with the um ongoing COVID issue, I'm afraid that that impact is going to linger into the fall. So I am actually anticipating that we're going to have more hardship than surplus.
Sure, that's understandable, and and I apologize. I'm looking at, I'm looking now, and you're right. Uh, that was um that was one that was already cut, so I apologize for that. Um, all right, those were all my questions. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Uh, Chief, while we have you, are you also covering covering civil preparedness?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, any any questions from the council about the civil preparedness budget? Okay, and uh I'm going to go out to the public. Any questions for the fire department or the civil preparedness budget? I see no indication in the chat bar. And Chief, uh, thank you for the to you and your department uh for all the work you're doing right now. I know you uh you told us you're running out of overtime and working very hard, and uh we're certainly grateful for all you're doing.
And thank you. Thank you for all the support as we move through this. So thank you so much.
Our pleasure. Next item on the agenda is the Public Works uh budget. I think I see members from Public Works logged in. If you could just chime in for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rob Bolshamitis, Director of Public Works. Uh, also with me this evening, Stephen Palermo Superintendent, Kathy Johns, Executive Secretary.
Do you uh, would you like to offer an introduction of any sort?
Well, I suppose I have to just to follow the the men in uniform that were ahead of me. So um uh, just as words of introductions, uh, what does Public Works do? Obviously, we uh we oversee the maintenance repair, two hundred and seventeen miles of town roads, sixteen town parks, uh, nine municipal buildings, plus thirteen more at our own facility, the community pool, and uh several municipal parking lots. Um, we also uh our garage services, our own fleet of more than twenty-four dump trucks, dozen pieces of heavy equipment. Um, our fleet vehicles, town employee fleet vehicles, police department, fire EMF services, et cetera. We we also take on interesting projects every year. This uh this past year, we replaced the seating at the council chambers. Um, as the police chief mentioned, we implemented a new um town hall telephone system as part of the security upgrades. We continue to reconstruct uh and and build a new athletic field at Pragman Park. Um, we're presently renovating space behind Scout for the STEM Academy. I think you're all aware that we recently completed improvements at town hall related to COVID to separate uh employees from the public when the building was still open to the public, and then again to uh further separate employees for safety. We also do town street trees, and if anybody's noticed, uh, as you're driving along North Main Street, we actually started to take a proactive approach and um start pruning some of our street trees. It's something we hope to continue um each and every year. So it's just an overview of what we do, what we've been up to this year. Um, the department operates on about a six-point-two million dollar budget annually. Um, I'm happy to say that our proposed budget is slightly under um the present year's adjusted um actual budget. There's three major categories. Uh, the first is salaries and wages. Um, it's very similar to last year's. There's a two thousand dollar uh increase, and that is due to um contractual uh merit increases. Um, the next facet is our operating and uh maintenance budget. That's a slightly lower than the previous year. Um, I won't run through each item. We could certainly discuss them with if and when there's questions. Um, a couple I'd like to point out, however, if you look at line, and I'm on page fifty-two, if you look at line fifty-three thousand for telephone, you'll see a pretty large increase from ninety-two hundred to thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, I think that's worthy of explaining. Uh, essentially, what's happening is is Public Works is going to pay the entire telephone bill for all town departments. Um, as a general utility bill, it used to be broken out where each department would pay um for their own lines. Um, so while we're we're looking at a twenty thousand dollar increase, um, the town will actually see significant savings uh for overall telephone usage. I think that's important to point out, and um Jim Bose may have the number of what we anticipate saving each year uh with that new telephone system. Uh, down towards the bottom of that page, um, you will notice line fifty-six, seven, six, six, purchasing services for the chemical house. Um, that is zeroed out this year. Um, that is essentially the cost to maintain the community pool. Um, this was budget planning, uh, knowing that the the town would be coming forward with a a renovation project this year as the uh the council did um this week uh elect to 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 bond. So we budgeted accordingly um along on that line item. And the last facet that we have is um our capital purchases, our equipment to to run the department. Um, this is always a moving target. Uh, you know, it it depends on um, you know, what we're using and in the age of our equipment. It's it's very important to you know, dispose of older equipment um to bring in uh new items. As I mentioned, we we operate twenty-four dump trucks um in at any given storm. Um, it's important to replace one or two years, one or two of those annually um and and try to get some fifteen, sixteen years on average um out of a dump truck. Um, the overall budget for capital items, um, I think is 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 lean and mean as as we can do at this point to maintain services. I got to credit the mayor, and when I say that, it's uh not everything I had asked for had gone through. Um, you know, but I I think with what uh was approved through the mayor's office, you know, we we can operate the way we need to, provide services to the town of Wallingford. And and overall, I think our um proposed budget this year is very much in line with the previous year's budgets.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Bolshamitis. We do have question requests from several. And first up, I see is Mr. Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hey, Rob and Steve, uh, thank you for uh everything you you do in your department, especially with the COVID response. Just thank you for that quick response and what you did at town hall. It's obviously really important. It's appreciated. I have questions, and you may be aware of them already, as I decide sent an email, and Mr. Bose had sent a reply with some answers. So so these uh questions are about past projects that are appear not to be closed out. And so I just uh wanted to go through those.
Are those in uh the Public Works budget or in the cap and non?
Well, that was my, you know, that's a great question. They're in the cap and non. So if you if you, I can limit my questions now to just to just this budget and then save. I mean, I don't, as long as as Rob isn't going anywhere, uh, if he could stay for the cap and non, that would be helpful.
Mr. Bolshamitis, I trust you'll stick around till the end.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I will skip those uh exciting cap and non questions. I guess a really minor question on uh appropriations in force, which we just talked about with with the chief. There's a line item for PCs, computers, like eleven hundred dollars. I could you? I guess I was just puzzled to see something like that in appropriations in force. It to me, when I see dump trucks, that makes sense to me. Those are bigger items, as you just mentioned, but I didn't understand, I didn't know. Uh, I can get the book the.
No, if I could jump in, Counselor Chertel, yes. So what you're seeing line item, eleven hundred and fifty dollars for PC and accessories. That is to replace a very problematic PC that we have here that is our our internet commuter um computer to get our emails. So um, you you're right, it it is strange that it that it appears to be carried forward. There's no reason to do that. In fact, when I met recently with finance, um, I, you know, I committed to making the purchase this year so it didn't have to be carried forward. I think it shows up on the list so that it wasn't lost in case that purchase wasn't made.
Okay, understood. Uh, my next question uh is about the, uh, well, I don't Chairman Savoni, you can correct me. The townwide paving program, is that a cap and non question or a Public Works budget question?
Mr. Bose, help us out.
Cap and non.
Cap and non. Okay. I feel like I'm a lawyer, and I keep getting overruled here. All right.
Nothing like that.
Yeah, right. I we, let me, let me go to the budget. Well, no, I can't. I'm sorry, because that's in the cap and non. Okay, then uh, I guess my my um I'm going to save my questions for cap and non then, because all my questions relate to items in the cap and non that relate to Public Works. So thank you, and I'll I'll be I'll be back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Counselor Zandry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, Rob?
I'm doing very well. Good evening.
How you do? All right, it's great. Um, I I have a few questions. I I like Counselor Chertel. I got a, I just moved a couple of them to cap and non recurring. Um, so my first question for you is on uh trash overall. I know over the years that there's been issues with uh trash being dumped in different parts of town. Um, uh, so I want to kind of split my question up. So are we about the same amount of trash that you guys are having to go around pick up? Do you do you see it increasing? What's your gauge on that?
Uh, yeah, no, it it's it's the same or even a little less. Uh, we're finding that the the newer style cans that we put out actually um have have diminished the amount of of private household trash that ends up in um, you know, that that public trash can waste stream.
And how about like the dumping, like, you know, in in the industrial park or up in the cul-de-sacs? Are you finding it's about the same? Is it less?
Yeah, I I'm I'm going to say the same for that, that it's it's essentially the same as uh the past or or even a little less right now.
And and I I would assume the same for the parks, because I know parks, a lot of times, there's trash in there as well.
Yeah, that that's true, but we we do notice more more roadside. Um, I I I've seen the last couple of weeks, more days. Um, you know, we're given assignments of of actually picking up roadside trash, so that that seems to have stepped up, but the the overall illegal dumping or or putting household trash in our, you know, public street cans has dropped off.
Now, I I I know that this is probably not something you're going to be able to answer, but I I ask it anyway. Is there if if you, are you Is there, if, if, are you even able to guess how much that is a cost burden to the town? And what I mean by that is I know that any trash that you're collecting like that, you have to pay at the transfer station on top of the fact that there's labor involved with picking it up, you know, the refrigerator, not the refrigerator, probably pretty big, air conditioner here and a couch there. And the added trash that's in the pails that probably goes above and beyond regular park use. Would you have even a ballpark estimate of what that might be costing the town?
I mean, not, not at this time. I could put together some costs. I mean, we run our trash truck daily that's going to go open, empty the cans on the streets and empty the cans at the park, pick up roadside trash. So that's really just built into our normal operating budget. You know, but again, if you're interested, I could, I could give you a summary of what that equipment, what that labor is and also what our tipping fees are to dump that material on a given basis.
All right, that, that might be good for something offline and something for me to track going forward. So let me, let me just kind of jump to my, my next set of questions. So with the, I'll call it a relatively mild winter and a lack of true snowstorms, but you guys had to go out and treat certain storms anyway because there was still some gradual buildup and follow-up after. Did you find that you had a lot of materials left over? A lot of overtime you were planning on that you didn't utilize? I'm trying to get a good understanding where you are on line items that are associated with handling the winter storms.
Great question. One thing I'll say about the winter storms, you're right, for total accumulation, we had significantly less than we have in previous years. What I'll also tell you is the storms we had earlier in this season, while they were not, you know, large volume storms, they were long in duration. There were three storms that were about three days each with guys essentially running non-stop and they were big material storms for, for salt application. However, at this point, we have used less than in previous years, although not as much as you would think. We have pretty much, you know, to be prepared, you know, spent what we had budgeted for salt this year. We will start next year with a larger surplus than we normally start with, but it's not overly significant. As far as overtime, I just happen to be looking at brand new numbers that came in today. We are, I would say exactly 75% into a fiscal year, the three months left in this fiscal year, May, June, July. I apologize, we're, there's two months left. So we're about somebody, I'm just an engineer. I'm not that good at math. But we're probably somewhere about 80%, 82% into the fiscal year. We are at 65% of our budgeted overtime. So not too far off, given the time of year. You know, overtime is not just snowstorms. Overtime could be evening and weekend call-ins, which happen all the time. We'll also be using up some overtime as we go into the spring paving season because, you know, that generally runs longer than our normal 3:30 PM day.
Okay, so you're comfortable saying that while you wouldn't call it a rounding error, it's not a huge differentiator?
I think because of the mild winter, we will come in a little lower than what we budgeted on those items, but not significantly where there's you know, some, some windfall that we're going to reap the benefit of.
Okay. So my next question, I'll save that one for last. So my next question is on your, on your line, I'm on page 52 and it's line of 53,100, the gas and diesel. So I see that your cost is running the remainder of this year. I saw my book shows actual to the end of January. So I extrapolated out at about 140,000. Your appropriation was 157. You have the same appropriation this year. So are you not expecting to see a savings from the change in the cost of fuel?
And actually, if you just give me a moment, so what I want to do is, is look at, you mentioned yours from the beginning of the year, your printout. I want to see where we are. So just bear with me one second as I flip through voluminous materials here. And you know, to kind of fill the air here, Councilor Zandry, if you had more questions, we could keep looking into this one. Exactly how we arrived at that, if you had other questions you wanted to.
Well, I, you know, maybe I could keep it simpler. I mean, like I said, if I, if I did the averaging, it looks like you're going to come in around 140. You budgeted 157, you're budgeting it out again and you've been approved for that. My, my generic question, maybe to make it simpler. Do you think that that would be less because of the drop in the fuel prices right now?
I mean, I think that's a very reasonable expectation, but as the police chief mentioned during his presentation, a lot of our fuel purchases, regardless of what's happening on the street, is locked into based on bid and timeframe.
Okay, so you're, so you're under the same type of a setup where?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so it could drop radically, go climb radically. So you're, you're pretty much on target. Again, I'm kind of taking yeah, I'm taking a little bit of cue from Counselor Todd. I'm also looking for, you know, can we get 10,000 from here and 20,000 from there and find a way to ball all this up so that we can maybe get that 1% out of the budget to make it a 0% increase. So I will jump to my final question then because the rest of my stuff is like Counselor Chertel's over in cap and non recurring. My favorite bridge, my John Street Bridge. So I want to ask you, number one, since the last time I talked to you about it, have we had any more hits over there? Because I haven't seen any myself.
I'm, I'm actually quite surprised myself and we drive over this several times daily and knock on wood, and this is a wood table. The guard rail and the fence system does all appear to be intact, suggesting that it has not been hit, which is great news.
Yeah. So I know, I know a couple of times you and I had spoken offline about, you know, maybe trying to figure, because every time that thing gets wiped out, we have to replace it and we pay for it and there's never any evidence as to who it is. We never get lucky enough to have somebody lose a bumper with a license plate on it. So I guess maybe just as a point of conversation, I know that Amazon is going through some things with the town about opening their, their center around the corner there and it's going to cause a lot more truck traffic on that bridge. So I, I guess I'm almost making a request that, and you've probably already done it, but thinking outside of the box when it comes to the discussions with them, because this is our cost here that we always have to deal with. If, if there are any opportunities working with them about, you know, whether it's permitting or trafficking or zoning or whoever, you know, the engineering department for, with respect to the traffic, if we could get them to pitch in funding for a camera system there or some other road widening setup that we could take leverage of. No differently when, when a business expands on Route 5 or they, they are, you know, they buy an adjacent property and they have to bring it to some level of conformity. They're requested to move greenery and, you know, put in more curb, you know, reduce curb cuts or change patterns out to be right-hand turns only. If we get an opportunity to do anything engineering wise over there, can, can we look into that? Because I think that if we can improve that entire intersection, especially if they're going to be the ones that are going to be impacting that, we might be able to get rid of some of these costs in the future when and if that, that bridge and that fence get hit again.
Yeah, all, all great ideas and, you know, quite honestly, in this capacity now over at DPW and as everybody knows, we did hire a town engineer and she started in November and this will probably fall more under her purview now. And I do believe she will be here this evening, probably on the line now, she could speak more to it. What I'm not aware of, especially with the COVID in meeting schedules that have changed and are stopped. I'm not sure with that planning and zoning application for the Amazon facility left off, if it's still open and if there's even a window to, as a condition of approval, if the commission was leaning that way to require some type of off-site mitigation. So that, that's something that I think that the, that the town and engineering could certainly look into.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. I just know that it ends up falling to Public Works to go over there and do the work. So I, that's why I wanted to mention it to you first and then carry it over from there. All right, very good. Those are all my questions. And like I said, I've got one for cap and non recurring later. So thank you, Mr. Baltramitis, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if I may, before, before you let me go, Councilor Zandry, just digging through our budget preparation book. So talking about the fuel, the line item, we had proposed was $157,000. We based that based on a five-year average and also information we get from, from our latest bidding. And what we were figuring is that was going to be about $152,000. So that might be an area where there's not a lot, but a little bit of room to to look at.
Okay, very good. Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Counselor Morgenstein, you're on.
Thank you, Chairman Savoni. Hi, Rob. So you answered the question. Hi, good, good. So you answered the question about the construction at Community Pool, obviously impacting your work there. And the, the phone, I had looked through and yeah, seen that big increase. I'm really glad that we've consolidated that and saved some costs. And I'll ask you, but then it looks like I have some other departments because I am looking through just a few pages of other departments that are still putting amounts on to telephone expense. Is there some amount that they might still have or could that be an error that they're still including telephone in their budgets?
I, yeah, I can't speak to their budgets, but perhaps Jim Bose could shed some, some light on that because he, because he's probably the one common link between all the departments for the budgeting of that item.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Morgenstein. There are a few departments that utilize mobile phones, cellular phones. This is, those are items that will remain in the budget in those departments, those various departments who utilize them. The budgets that have been reduced are those who are bound here in Town Hall.
Okay, well, and again, I can ask because I see some Town Hall departments that are still including it. So if that's the case, we may find ourselves with some small savings there. Okay.
Can you, do you have one off the top of your head?
Registrar voters.
Oh, yes. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. I forgot. Registrar, we are keeping something in their budget based upon Mr. Avery and Mr. Miller, our registrar's recommendation for when they have elections and they need phones at the schools. So this is their estimate of what they would need. So, but it's not for their phones in this building. That's a, that's a good question. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I forgot that.
A physical phone that can be unplugged and used somewhere else. Okay, good, good to know. Okay. And then for Mr. Baltramitis, which it's not maybe specifically you, but my understanding in speaking with some departments and just the public in general is that we paid for this whole new phone system and it has the capability for voicemail. But especially in Town Hall, there are several departments that it was turned off or not utilized, even though we have that capability. Is that something that is literally just a flick of a switch? Or is that an installation thing if we had different administration that we're willing to allow voicemails?
I will answer that. Typically, we want people to answer the phones. On occasion, when no one's in the office, they're on vacation or or out sick or whatever, then no one's there, then voicemail is fine. But otherwise, we want people to answer the phone. So if someone calling, needing assistance, we'll have someone to talk to.
Yeah. So in this day and age, again, this is an old saga. It's not really a budget thing, but if I'm looking over the budget at 2:30 in the morning and think of something, it's a way to call, leave a message and people can do their job at a time that might not necessarily impact their workflow. But anyway, yeah, that's a whole different. So from a cost standpoint, is it, Rob, an ability with that phone system to simply flick a switch or was it a job to be done to dismantle that? And if we were to want to put it back, is it something that's going to undertake some work on people's part?
I'm sorry, Councilor Morgenstein, you talk about if we
that's currently turned off was much of a work to turn it off because it is capable in this phone system of having it? And if it's much of a work issue to turn it back on?
It's, it's not as easy as a switch. It is programming. It would require, you know, the vendor Frontier to program it that way. But it's, you know, it's something that is, you know, potentially it's, it's built in. It has the capability for each line.
Right, right. And so we dismantled it on many departments and if we wanted Frontier to come back, if we were allowed to put it back on. Okay. That was that question. Recycling, your oversight of recycling, I'm dating myself here back when we had a recycling committee and Mr. Rowe was here. The contracts for the recycling center, I believe, were managed by program planning. So in seeing that that's something you've listed in your duties, that oversight. We have a company that provides our recycling. Is there a cost to us, your oversight of them? I just wanted to clarify a little bit what's entailed in your oversight of the dump and the recycling center.
Well, you know, fortunately, first of all, so Susan Schott, who, you know, still is present in the program planning office, thankfully helps with a lot of the, you know, municipal side of the solid waste, the recycling and the composting programs. You know, so a lot of the information we get on the budgets in the cost actually, you know, she prepares that, but it shows up as line items in, in our budget. Like you correctly state, we do rely on a vendor. It's a bid service. So we'll get good competitive pricing to run those operations and we're very fortunate. We actually have the same vendor now for the solid ways for the recycling and the composting. And it's, it's been a, a great relationship between the town and this vendor. They're very well qualified. I, I hear mostly great things, you know, anybody who uses the transfer station.
Oh, absolutely. No, I find there really is a nice world of difference in their helpfulness. Okay. And certainly the costs, the ratio of, you know, no one's making money on recycling where actually I would presume that is a cost these days. Can you comment any on that impact on our budget at all?
It is a cost, you know, another cost is participating in the hazardous waste, you know, down, down in New Haven, which our residents can bring hazardous materials to. You know, all, all in all, our has waste central costs us about $34,000 a year to participate in that.
Okay, thank you. And trees. There was a time where we had a phase of tree, take them down, replace them. You and I have talked about however many thousands of trees we have in town and I certainly see the amount of work that is being done. I really is our trees wrapped into something else in our budget book? I really didn't quite come across your expense on trees.
Yeah. So if you look at page 52, line 56756, we budget 90,000 annually. we budget $90,000 annually for tree removal, maintenance, et cetera. I can tell you, you could give me 10 times that money and we could spend it. You know, we do what we can with our own resources, our own personnel. But we have to rely on vendor services for the remaining part of it.
And is there any uptown plan, Center Street, South Main Street, trees coming down and being replaced in this budget?
No, there's not, not any wholesale clearing and replanting at this point.
It's really more, we've had so many storms and things that need to come down. So you're coming around to damaged trees. Okay.
Well, you know what? It's damaged. It's a lot of diseased and dying. You know, the Emerald Ash Borer, you know, it's significant. You, anywhere you look, you could find a tree that is dead or dying and probably needs to be taken down. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, one of the things we started this year was, you know, a proactive approach to pruning trees, starting in our downtown area along North Main Street that'll proceed along South Elm. And, you know, the areas downtown and, you know, eventually in over the years, work itself out from that.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that to see that we are doing some pruning. And that helps to save them rather than it being just, let's take it down once it's become a real mess. Okay, that really answers my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Morgenstein.
Up next is Counselor Tata.
Hi, Mr. Baltramidis. How are you?
I'm doing well. Good evening.
Good. So just one question, which I asked everyone else so far. I was looking through your budget. I see, you know, a lot of your capital items or a few of them are already taken out. But if we were to ask you to try to find 1%, do you think your department could do with 1% less than what the mayor already said he was going to give you? And if I could make a suggestion, it looks like there was a crew cab truck that's $60,000. Looks like it replaced him of an 18-year-old truck that has high mileage. This wasn't one of the ones you said had ride. You just said it had high mileage. Is that, I would say, I mean, that would basically be your 1% right there, just if you didn't have that. So not that I want to, you know, tell you what to do, but that was just one thing that stood up to me. And I have a car that's 22 years old and I'm still driving. So I'm just wondering if maybe that's somewhere, something that would be easy to maybe put off for another year to find that 1%. But I just wanted your opinions on that, even if it's not that, if it would, you could find the 1% somewhere else.
Well, let me, let me ask you this question. That 22-year-old car, that's not the one you put away for the winter, is it?
I do know.
Okay, so that might be one reason it lasts 22 years. You know, so as I mentioned with the dump trucks, it is the same with the crew cab. We use these every day. If these trucks don't work, we don't work. If I thought that was something I could give up, I would. I've got to get these guys to work. That truck is 18 years old. It is excessively rotted. It does need to be replaced. I am looking up and down my budget for, and I think we found about $5,000 in the gas and diesel item. I also want to point out, if I may, in addition to some of the capital requests that didn't pass muster at the top office, we have a pretty significant line item. This is a very important one for us, 54315, page 52. That's maintenance of buildings and grounds. That's the account that we take care of everything that comes up in the year, whether it's a broken HVAC system, a plumbing issue. That, we watch those dollars like a hawk. That already took a $20,000 hit for this budget year. So I'm already starting this year or this next year saying, we've got to be careful what we select for maintenance. Like we're that paper thin. Right? We spent almost $300,000 there last year. We're $48,000 less than that. That already puts us in a tough position. You know, to answer your question, and I hate to give up things on another department, but we put in capital requests for some improvements at the senior center. And I don't take these lightly. The building, you know, is constructed in the 90s. It's time for some upgrades. We put in there some monies for painting, for an LED light upgrade, which would also save us money annually on the energy consumption. I think they're worthwhile projects. That's why they're in there. But as I look at our three-page overall budget, those are the only things that I could see that wouldn't have an impact on our ability to provide services to the town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbine, did I see your hand earlier?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would expect that based upon the inquiry that I'm up next.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Rob. Nice to hear from you at least. I can't see whether or not you're on video. So, you know, you referenced the what?
I say good evening to you, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you. You mentioned in your introductory comments about the Community Pool project. And have you been part of that, that project up until now?
I mean, I certainly have been involved. As you know, there's been a very involved pool committee. I did assist them in drafting the RFP that led to the hiring of the design consultant. I've been involved with the review of plans that went to the land use boards and then out for bid for construction. So, yes, I've had a fair amount of involvement.
And from time to time, I hear from employees of Public Works that complain to me that there's things that we have others do that perhaps we can do in-house. You know, one of the complaints was about the demolition of the Brothers Building originally. It was going to be farmed out, and I think we ended up doing a lot of that in-house. With regard to that project, the Community Pool project, have you been asked whether or not Public Works can do any part of that project to save the taxpayers' money, maybe?
No, I haven't been asked. I don't think I considered that. If I was asked, I I probably have a reservation on how we would blend services with an overall general contractor. It is very nice to have one general contractor who is responsible for the quality of an entire project, rather than trying to break things up for a little bit of savings where there could be some finger pointing later, hey, you did the excavation, you didn't backfill properly. There's a lot of value to having one GC who's responsible for the quality. So I just throw that out there.
Are you aware of the costs of that project?
Very.
Okay, and, you know, one of those costs, and I keep on harping on this, and, you know, there are others issues, but the sand volleyball court, you know, we've gotten quotes ranging from $3,500, $15,000, now right $80,000. Do you think that's something Public Works can do for a lot cheaper than $80,000?
Well, at face value, I certainly thought so. And you mentioned some other numbers there, and I know those were thrown around before the construction bids came in. And if I recall correctly, I don't have the bid results in front of me. There were three or four bidders, maybe four?
There's three.
Three, thank you. They were all very, it's always interesting. I love construction bidding and seeing where contractors are going to put their money. I found it very interesting in those alternates with the volleyball court, that everybody had it at a, what we thought was a shockingly higher number. You know, nobody priced it at $3,500. I mean, it ranged from, correct me if I'm wrong, 60 to that 80, or maybe even higher. So that tells me that everybody did that for a reason. So do I think we could do something in the future? You know, after a project is closed out, a contractor is relieved of all his obligations, go in there and, you know, do something more economical than that? We probably can't. But I do question why everybody was consistently bidding it at the number that they had.
Do you know, since you did say that you had a hand in putting together the specs, do you know why, you know, you admit the number was shockingly high? There's something, I haven't seen those specs. Something about those specs that
Well, I think it was, you know, it's it's a deep sand system. There was drainage below it, you know, it wasn't inexpensive. And yeah, I did use the word shockingly only because we, you know, we thought that was going to come in at the, you know, $10,000, $15,000 range, and it did not.
Okay. I mean, a project like that, it would seem to me, could be a standalone. You're not taking anything down. You know, I guess to use the same analogy that I started with, Public Works could be a part of demolishing the current bathhouse and then saying to a vendor, you know, okay, you've got a blank slate here in conjunction with the architect, do your job, which could save the taxpayers an awful lot of money here if somebody had inquired of Public Works as to whether or not they could partner with the town to do part of this project. So, so significant concern to me, and that's all the questions that I've had at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Counselor Fishbine. So just to kind of follow up on that, I think you can always do the project after, you know, any of those, with the exception of the larger slide, because you'd have the mechanicals below the concrete. You'd want to do that as part of the initial installation. So yes, you can always do these other ad alternates later at another time. I do think that there's generally some economic value to doing it as part of the overall project. I think, you know, economy of scales, you're going to save money that way. As far as Public Works doing demolition there to save money, anything is a possibility. It's certainly within our wheelhouse to do that kind of work. But I will tell you that that means that something else, probably roadway work, is sliding.
Sorry, I muted myself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you. Before I go out to the public, I just want to give the councilors one more opportunity. And Mr. Cumberford, you're up next. I'm not sure. I see that you've told me you have some kind of tech problem. I'm I'm not sure what kind of tech problem you're having, but if, I think you need to activate your microphone on your device.
Mr. Chairman, maybe since he is having tech problems and Rob is still going to be here, we can keep going. And he can, when he gets on, he can jump in and
Yeah, Mr. Cumberford, if you can solve your connection issue, we will come back to you. Before we move on to engineering, any more council questions for the engineering budget? I mean, I'm sorry, the Public Works budget? There being none?
Chairman, we did have the questions written.
So we do have questions from a member of the public, from Mr. Brudinsky. They appear to me to be directed through to the the six-year capital budget. I guess I'll, Mr. Baltramidis, were you forwarded these?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did get them today. And I think I would agree with you that they seem to be applicable to Cap'n on all of the questions in comments. So whenever you'd like to have these addressed, you just let me know.
How about number three? Is that, is that under Cap'n on or is that, is that under your department budget? The paving contracts?
Yeah, I think number three really is a follow-up to number two. And it seems to revolve around paving, which is a Cap'n item.
Okay, so we'll defer those until we come back to Cap'n on. Ms. Allison Kapachinsky has been waiting patiently, and we are on to engineering. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms.
Would you like to make an introduction of any sort, or would you like to just go to the grilling?
I think I'll start just by introducing myself, Allison Kapachinsky. I started my role as, Mr. Val, as town engineer in late December. My budget this year, we're not requesting any additional staff. And we're also not requesting any capital projects either. And then in general, our is about 3% to 3.5% less than last year that we're requesting. And yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. And the first question from the council I see is from Counselor Tata.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. Just same questions I kind of asked the other departments. Number one, and have you saved anything during, during the, or due to the pandemic? I don't know if that would really apply to your office, but any savings realized due to that? And then also, I know, I know I see your budget is less than it was. So just also wondering if we were to ask you to try to find 1% to cut from your budget, do you think that that's possible? So just those two questions. Thanks.
Sure. So the first question about our operations during this pandemic, we actually haven't really much of a treatment. Here's continuing you know, we're busy. We still name requests that we have been maybe aside from residents, a little more time at home, so. And then your other question about saving the 1%, I think for our budget, that would be about 4,800. And if I had to give a thought to there, I would probably say the highway guardrail reimbursable. We did ask for $10,000 this year compared to $5,000 last year. And just to kind of explain quickly what is used for, if there's an accident that will be going through insurance to get money to repair the guardrail, we work with the risk manager to obtain that money first and then use this pot of money to have our go out and replace that guardrail. We've had a lot of the job coming in around $4,000, $4,500 for a typical job that is very large. So we were asking for $10,000 in the chance that my job had, then we just fund with that money. If something had to go, did function with $5,000 this year, and I think we could do it again next year.
Great. Thank you so much for honesty. I appreciate it. And, and those were my only questions. Thanks. And welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Who are you?
Jim Bose.
Please, please tell me that, because I don't see you.
I apologize. But with regard to the issues that Allison and Council
But with regard to the, the issues that Allison and Councilman Tata were just talking about, the, that's a reimbursement. That line item, there's three items in the engineering budget that there's a revenue offset in the budget, dollar for dollar. So technically, it's a wash. So there really is not, if, if you're going to redo it, then one of those line, those three line items in the engineering budget, we're also going to have to reduce the corresponding revenue by the same amount. So there's, there's nothing. That's all.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Kepachinsky. I have just, I have one actually, I, I want to go back to the question I had earlier regarding the John Street Bridge, but, but I have another one as well now. Um, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the bridge. Kind of just dovetailing back to the conversation I was having with Mr. Volchramides. With respect to anything going on with Amazon, has, has that all stopped that, that permitting process there? Because, and the reason that I bring it up, it's as part of this conversation, it goes back to cost. I, I'm looking for ways to keep us from having to continually repair that bridge. And I'm looking at their activity there and their expansion of that site as, as an all encompassing thing for that entire area. Are you able to, is there anything relevant to the budget that might be a part of that conversation?
So I did make note when asking those questions. The permitting is still open with Amazon currently. I'm not sure what the plan is going forward. I don't know if the Planning and Zoning Commission is moving towards a web-based meeting. But I do believe the application is open. So I have made note to follow up with them to see if that's something we could pursue as part of this application.
Fantastic, because I, I know that there's been many times that, that we've had to send Public Works out. The engineering would go take a look at it, Public Works would come out and fix it. And we never get a chance to claim any type of insurance on the perpetrator because they're gone. These things happen late at night and we, you know, whatever we can come up with creatively there, I think would be awesome. So thank you for being proactive to take some notes on that. I do have a quick question for you on your, I'm on page forty-nine. And I'm looking at the line fifty-three thousand ten with the traffic signals. So you had, you had, in that budget is twenty-two thousand dollars. You've got about twelve thousand spent, you know, even if you consume it all this year, it, it's basically double. In, in the appropriation against the actual. So can you tell me a little bit about that, that, that work there and where we are with it today?
Yeah, I would ask Mr. Volchramides to please chime in in case I do correct. He went over all of this extensively, but I gave you guys the wrong information. As far I know, this is for traffic signals, that is take the traffic signals in town that the town is, is paying for to keep. Let, keep lit. And so that's the best estimation, right at that number using the guidance from the mayor's office as far as utility prices is coming.
Okay, because I mean, again, you know, kind of taking a cue back to. Counselor Tata's effort and, and all of our efforts, but I mean, she's been really one with the charge on it. I mean, as an example, you know, you have the overall budget for the department being three hundred seventy-five thousand. Thirty-seven hundred would be that one percent, and I'm looking at a line item that's forty-four thousand going to forty-six. It's only twelve spent through, through January. I mean, is that something that is going to be spent, which I'm fine with? If we've got something to utilize and otherwise, I'd like, that's something I'd like to look at trimming.
Yeah, I'm bringing up my.
Rob Volchramides, I'm, I'm going to jump in and I, I don't have the engineering budget in front of me, but there's, there's two line items that are associated with traffic signals. One is um, maintenance and that's about fifteen thousand. Are you talking about the one that is energy consumption, electrical?
So the fifty-three thousand ten says the appropriation is forty-four thousand seven hundred. The actual right now on that is twelve thousand. What, what we're, what's being asked for this year is forty-six. And as of, as of January thirty-first, only twelve thousand was spent. But I'm trying to get an understanding of why that line is so underspent. Is it justified and are we going to use it this year? And then if, if so, or if not, why does it need to be forty-six thousand going into next year?
All right, I want to grab one of my budget books just so I can see last year's, just so I could see the line item. Counselor Zandry.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. And be with me while I look up engineering.
Page forty-nine, if that helps.
It does help. Okay. Okay, so yes, line item fifty-three zero-ten is utilities traffic signal. What that is, is the, that's how we pay for the energy consumption. So that doesn't have anything to do with the maintenance. Allison was correct. That's how we keep them lit. Now, that number is not just based on what it costs to buy a kilowatt hour of power. It's actually based on the services that the Wallingford Electric Division has to provide to us. They track their time, materials, equipment, et cetera, to go out and service, change light bulbs, bucket truck, that type of thing. So that's kind of an all-inclusive cost that we have from ED to power the lights and change out lamps when needed.
Okay, so, so again, I'm, I'm, the, 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 the June twenty nineteen actual was twenty-two thousand. The twenty-twenty is twelve thousand as of. This January. So to me, it looks like it would track about the same amount, but we were appropriated forty-four thousand, so.
Yeah, we, we might have, we might have had a half-year billing and are waiting for the other half.
Okay, but we've got forty-four thousand. Even if it was a full year, it looks like twenty-two.
Yeah, what, what I can do tomorrow is um. Go to engineering and, and look at the expenses, so I can give you feedback on that.
Sure, I mean, I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to nitpick anybody.
No, no, we're, we're, we're all looking, we're all looking for, we're all looking for the money. I hear you.
Right, I mean, to me, to me, it's like, you know, originally it was, the actual, the year before was twenty-two. The, the actual right this minute is twelve. Even if it was doubled in seven months, I got seven months of history, but even if I doubled it for fourteen, I'm going to end up with twenty-four against the forty-four, and now we're asking for forty-six. So, I mean, if it, if it's justified number, we're going to change more, it's going to be more money, it's going to be more energy, then it's justified ask. If not, that's a, that's a, a number that we can look at to maybe reduce.
No.
I, I'm good with waiting on the follow-up for that. That's, that's totally. All right, um, so thank you both very much. Those, those were my only questions.
All right. Uh, any other questions on the council for engineering? All right, Mr. Commerford, I, I know you have questions for Public Works. Do you have anything for engineering? I mean, for, yeah, do you have anything for engineering?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, do you have questions for engineering?
No, um, no, I don't. I have questions for Department of Public Works. I'm sorry.
Okay, could, could you just hold off for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. Just back to the council one more time for engineering because, oh no, you are sticking around for the next two lines, aren't you, Allison?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Then what we'll do before we dive into cap and non-recurring is we'll go back, go back to Mr. Commerford for your questions for the Public Works budget.
So I'm back on deck?
You're off-deck and live.
Okay, Mr. Volchramides, I know that the Corporation Counsel, Janice Small, testified in court that the town owns the wall that surrounds the Center Street Cemetery. Does this include the gate and the maintenance? Of this as well?
Mr. Volchramides, is this in your budget?
I apologize, I was, I was on mute. I, I think I did hear the question, but Mr. Chairman, you just asked me if, if this was in my budget as far as. The question was regarding the cemetery wall and gates?
The, the budget we're reviewing right now is, does Mr. Commerford's question have to do with that?
I'm not sure. I, I didn't hear a budget question. I did not hear a budget question.
All right, that's.
The, 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 the budget question would be that Public Works maintains everything that the town of Wallingford owns, including the cemetery wall, which there has been controversy as far as the maintenance, who maintained it, how to go, how it went on the bid. So my question is, is including the wall, which. Corporation Counsel Small testified in court that the town owns the wall. Would that not include part of your budget or any of their part of should? I'm not saying specifically. But shouldn't it not include the gates that were impregnated into that wall? So it's a simple yes or no question. Should the, should the occasional rise?
Okay, well. Ah, okay, because there is nothing in the budget regarding the wall in this proposed budget. But if, if there, a need did arise, I believe it would fall on the town of Wallingford. It's, it's our wall.
But the, I'm, I'm specific to the gate as, as far as that goes, that, that specific item, Mr. Volchramides.
My, my understanding is that the gates, if you're talking about the entrance from Center Street, the entrance from South Orchard Street, I believe those. Are the town of Wallingfords.
So they would be responsible for maintenance of those. We agree with that?
That the town of Wallingford would? Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
And, and looking at the new updated agreement with the Cemetery Street Cemetery. It says in that part, it says that the Public Works is responsible for tree work and road maintenance. But road maintenance is very vague. What exactly do you perceive as road maintenance for the Center Street Cemetery as your obligation as part of that agreement? And what is that include in your budget for this year?
Well, nothing is a specific line item. I guess, I mean, number one, those are, they're dirt, they're not improved roads. Maintenance could be regrading the roads, it could be removing snow from the roads. You know, but we don't have a specific line item in our budget for the interior roads of the cemetery.
So if I'm to assume that I'm correct, there is nothing specific as to what it states as far as what Public Works's responsibilities are. So therefore, there is nothing specific that would be outlined in any of your budget that I'm looking at that would be specific to requirements, whether it be snow plowing, paving, or anything of that nature.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. There's nothing.
Okay, now, in, in, in the past, in my opinion, the Center Street Cemetery may be. Express concern about the safety of that existing building, meaning the building that's with, with the walls of the confined area of the cemetery. They, in my opinion, they may have stated that it potentially might collapse and so forth, but that's under your purview as the charter is written. So that being said, when was the last time, and I understand that you're, and by the way, congratulations, Mr. Volchramides. You're the, the, the new director of Public Works. When was the last time to your knowledge that that building was inspected? And what is the state of the condition of that building as we talk about today? And what money, if any, is allocated in your budget to either to secure that building, demolish that building, or what is going to be the status of that building based upon your new budget?
Mr. Volchramides, is this building in your budget at all?
No, no.
Okay, so does anything in his question have to do with your current, but with your budget for the coming year?
No, not by any line item that I have.
Okay, Mr. Commerford.
Chairman Savoni, Chairman Savoni, the, the, the people that are in charge of that building had made numerous amounts of statements in my opinion that the building was unsafe and so forth. And it was also led to believe that the building was going to be demolished. So that being said, and I, and I also believe that Mr. Laffin, Counselor Laffin had stated that he wanted a long-term plan of that. And they also made the statement that the building was going to come down. So part of that budget would include the melt, the demolition of that building as well as, you know, if it was unsafe to secure that building. So I would have assumed by now that saving was made.
Yeah, Mr. Commerford, if, if, if the answer to your question is that there is nothing in, in the coming years Public Works budget that has to do with your question, it's not appropriate for this meeting. If you have a question about the twenty-twenty-one budget for Public Works, that's appropriate for this meeting.
The, the question is, is why isn't, if, if the building is unsafe, why isn't that building being demolished? And I guess my next question would be, I would have to bring it up with the risk manager and the law department because these other entities that we lease it out to or have oversight of that building clearly made these statements, but yet it falls under the purview of the Director of Public Works, which is Mr. Volchramides. So the question is, then, what has Mr. Volchramides have done since he's become the Director of Public Works to make sure that that building is in, in clear. Safety of, of the residents of the town or anybody that occupies that building?
Mr. Commerford, I still don't, I still don't hear a question that has to do with the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget.
How much money is being allocated in this budget to make sure that that building is secure? And vacant and, and um, withdrawn from the, the insurance. To reduce the exposure.
He's already answered that that building is not in his budget for the twenty-twenty-one budget year.
For. For, for anything, including the, in, in inspection to make sure that it's safe. And you're comfortable with that, Chairman Savoni?
My comfort is really not the issue. The issue is whether or not it's part of the upcoming budget. And he's answered the question. You know, if you want to pursue your EPLI claim, this meeting is not the place for it.
No, it, it, it clearly is as far as a, an expenditure of town's resources to secure a potential building that may be a safety hazard to the public. Stated by the people that occupy that.
Now you're arguing your point, and you're still not asking a budget question.
I, I clearly asked a budget question, Mr. Savoni. The question is, is how much money is allocated to secure that building based upon the occupants that, that occupied that building for well over twenty years? And the answer is zero. So the next question then would obviously go to the risk manager and then the law department.
And they're not on the agenda tonight.
They'll be next. Thank you.
All right, back on the agenda. Next up is the cap and non-recurring budget. And Counselor Shortell, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. Mixture of questions for Mr. Bose and Mr. Volchramides. Mr. Bose, thank you for the. The responses to the questions I, I'd emailed in, a bunch of us have emailed it, not just me. And we got those back and I, I just want to kind of go over a couple of those and then get into a little more detail. But one thing we talked about, we asked. You had said that. there's $1.2 million in cap and non that is not assigned to any project. It's basically like leftover money from previous projects, did I read that right?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, so, the, and by charter, anything in cap and non, it can't, you know, it can't go to, it has to go to some other project that would, that would qualify as a capital expenditure. So, uh, the council, so I guess my, my, my question is, the council could say at the, you know, at the motions meeting, I could make a motion in three weeks and say, I want to make a motion to create a new account for a purity pool project and I, to move that money into that account. Would anything prevent that from happening? I mean, aside from everyone voting it down, but, but could that be a possibility?
I don't see it as a problem. I don't have the charter in front of me, I don't know if that has to go through the mayor's office first, but from a financial standpoint only, I, I can't say that would not be a problem because it would be losing funds that have been closed out over the years.
Right, that, right, that was what I was getting at, was it's not like I'm taking money from another project, which I'm going to do in about 30 seconds, but for now, for, for that 1.2 million, right, no one can say, oh, but you're not going to pave a road, or you're not going to do this. That money is just sitting there, it's extra, and it can't, it, it's, it can't go anywhere else. It's not like, you know, except for a capital project. Chairman Savoni, I, I, in terms of the charter, I just, do you agree that that's something we could explore? Whether or not anyone agrees with doing it, it's not something that we couldn't do, I just.
My perception is that it, it's the capital definition, so.
Right, but the issue of the mayor having to initiate it, I think we are, usually the mayor would outside of budget season, but we are, this is the one time of year where by charter, we could do something like that. That's what I'm getting at.
I, I have no reason to disagree with that.
Okay. So my next, thank you for, for both of that. My, my next question is really, I, I'd like to, you know, I, I went line by line through the monthly report, through the January one, which is the one that I had at the time that I sent the email. Because there were a lot of projects in the monthly report from previous past years, they were cap and non projects in the cap and non budget, uh, that still had money in them. And I was just trying to understand why these projects were still out there. So I just wanted to kind of talk through a few of them. So this is where I, you know, I defer to either Jim or Rob, whoever wants to, can answer the question best, but I'll, I'll start with the Wallace Ave construction. This was from 2010, so it's a decade old. And there's over $40,000, $40,0275, $40,275.48 left. And the, uh, in the memo response, when I asked about this, the, the response was that funds were needed for various work items. Can it, can we get any more specific on exactly what's left to do?
Sure, Jim Boats, Councilman. Just to let you know, I, I think I included this in my, my answers to you. We were a little bit late in posting some transactions and I, due to an opening in our, our accounting office, and that's why those balances changed in those amounts that I sent to you. And I do apologize for that, but when Rob Voltramides and I met along with Steve Palermo, his superintendent, and my deputy controller, Tim Senna, we meet at least twice a year on the cap and non projects, if you will. We normally meet, you know, around budget time, and then we meet towards the end of maybe, I'll say July or August or as schedules allow, and we, and we do it face to face, and we go through these items, sort of like what you're doing now. And, uh, I tried to surmise, or summarize, I should say, just on that sheet, a brief, um, point that, that came up the last time we discussed these were, which were, I believe, in very early March or late February, and I apologize, I forgot the exact date. Anyway, uh, that, that wasn't meant to be the whole description because, and you're correct, Chris, Rob Voltramides will have the, the, uh, more detail to that, I'm sure he can, he can answer these. But this was just a, to try to summarize it on one sheet to, and get out to you folks so that you would have at least a little bit of background when you were asking these questions. And I, I, I hope that serves. And with that, I'll, 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 I'll unmute ourself here, I'll, I'll mute ourself here, and then let Rob maybe get into some of the details as to maybe why. And I'll drop, if the chairman sees my mic get back on, that means I'm jumping in to maybe offer something that came up in our discussions that he may have forgotten, if that's okay with you folks.
Fine with me.
Very good, okay, Rob, you're up.
Hi, Counselor Shortell, so, um, you know, obviously, most of the, i- it is an older project, most of it was, was completed. Really, the, the largest outstanding item, um, in conjunction with the Wallace Avenue Construction Project, on the west side, um, we had constructed a, um, it's, it's constructed out of millings, it's not paved, but a public parking area. So as part of that original project, what was going to happen is that was going to receive a chip seal surface. That didn't happen, quite honestly, since that time, one of the things that happened is we built the public parking on the east side of Wallace Avenue. And what I'm actually hoping is that we can get a better surface rather than chip seal, that we can pave it. But we're looking to do that as part of a, an overall uptown public parking improvement project, which would include, because as economy scales and being able to do three lots at the same time, we are hoping to, um, bring to the council a project for the rear of Simpson Court, that public parking area, as well as both the west and east sides of Wallace Avenue, those parking lots, for, for paving. And that's one, that, that's why we have kept that line item open and not completed it. I, I'd rather not spend the money on a chip seal if we can get a more permanent pavement installed there.
I, I appreciate that, I agree with everything, you know, I love everything you just said. I'm not sure Counselor Fishbine did, but I'm sure he'll chime in, uh, wearing his Voldemort sweatshirt there. But, but I, I think where I am going to ask a question is from, maybe this is back to Mr. Bose then, I don't know. I'm struggling with the philosophical concept of cap and non, because I feel like what's happening is, cap and non is for a big project, and you spend the money on the project, and then there's a little leftover, which is what we just talked about with the 1.2 million. In this instance, though, there's a little bit leftover, and now we're really talking about a different project. We're, a, a project that I, everything you said I love, I, I think is great. But paving, using any, using any money from that Wallace Ave for Simpson Court, number one, the council would have to approve that, I would think. That's not a decision that could be made without, that would be a transfer, that would not be the council, right? So I think that's, that's my first issue. And I guess I just feel like, i- i- using a 10-year-old project as a savings account is what I feel like is happening here. I would rather see that money cleared out and then rebudgeted in a new budget. But I'm open to being challenged on any of that, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand why it would still sit there for 10 years and, and how we could potentially use the money for a different project. So, let me, so let me back up, because I kind of rambled there, let me get specific. To do what you just described, you would have to come to the council, and the council would specifically have to transfer that money out of that account into a new project, correct?
Um, so, this, this is Rob, I, I want to, I want to make sure that I was clear. I wasn't talking about using that Wallace Ave money for anything other than the parking lot that was also associated with that very same project. For time-wise, we were looking to combine it with some other uptown parking lots for the economy of scales. That, that's what I was trying to get across. And those projects are, that Simpson Court rear is unfunded. You will recall, we brought it to you about a year ago as an idea. We have still been working on the leases. We hope to be bringing you a project very shortly for funding, and then everything would roll together.
Okay, that, the, the economies of scale part does make sense to me, um, on, on that one. Let me go to another one on the list. There's one, Hall Avenue Streetscape. And the, again, this is going to be more of a philosophical, I mean, the dollar amount's really small. Looks like there's about $717 left. And the, the line item, and, and from Mr. Bose, was the project still ongoing, is the purchase order open? I guess I'm just looking for, again, what, what's left to do on that one? And what, and what's the, the nature, like, when we say a purchase order is open, I, I, what's the, like, what's the date on that purchase order? How long has it been open? This looks like another project that's been around for a while. I mean, a purchase order isn't, it's not a contract, so I'm trying to understand the significance of that.
Yeah, so, this is, this is Rob, Jim, if I could try to answer that. So number one, um, the Hall Avenue Streetscape project is an ongoing construction project. I mean, it's obviously the one you see, you, you could drive there, down there now and see the burnt apartment, a bunch of brick pavers currently being reset, so that's an ongoing project. Hope to finish it up this spring, close it out, get those lights turned on. I think the mistake is, only a little mistake, but the mistake that was made there, I think there were three different funding sources over many years for the Hall Avenue project. Whatever that remaining balance is in the oldest one, we should have used it up a long time ago and then that account would have dropped off. So it looks like there is, you know, two or three open accounts, but it is an ongoing construction project. We just should have used the oldest monies and exhausted them first.
Got it, that's, I agree, okay. So it's, so it's Jim Bose's fault, that makes sense to me, okay, next.
I like that, we are on the same page.
Right, right. Okay, so let's talk about the South Turn Pike Road Culver. Uh, because that one has a significant balance left. That one, it's the same, it's got almost $80,000 left, it's from 2012. And again, it says project still ongoing, purchase order open, what is the, what's going on with that?
Okay, so, um, it's Rob again. So this is an engineering project, but it would be unfair of me to have managed that project the last four years and, and say, hey, ask Allison. The South Turn Pike, that is presently in design. When I was transitioning from engineering, we brought the consultant in, working on the project, so there's a good fair transition of the project for the new town engineer. It is an ongoing project. One of the things that really slowed that down, again, because it's in design, is there's a funding source attached to that, and it's the, um, uh, local bridge program. And the local bridge program is constantly, it's, money's there, money's gone. Money's back again because it's a state program. And, you know, that, that kind of slows us down. When, when you hear that money is gone and we don't know when it's going to be back and that grant's back alive, you, you tend to put a break, put the brakes on a, on a design of, of a project like that. And, and that's what's happened. But I, I think what we have collectively decided is we're just going to move forward, finish the design, if the funding's there, great, if not, we're going to wait for the next funding source and have a shovel-ready project ready to go.
Okay. North Plains Industrial Road, uh, this is one from 2012 as well, there's about $30,000 left, and we're waiting a state DOT audit.
Yeah, correct, sometimes these, um, these audits, Counselor Shortell, they could, they could take 10 or a dozen years to finally happen. Sometimes what happens coming out of an audit, we will find, sometimes we find that the state owes us money. Not surprisingly, more often than not, we find that we actually owe them money. So that, that's why we keep an account like that open. The alternative would be to close it, and then six years from now, we're trying to explain to the council, we need $30,000 for a project that nobody remembered because we owe the states some money.
Okay, do we have, okay, so you said these things take 10 to 12 years, I mean, do you, do you have any ETA at one day?
I, I would not even venture a guess. I, I could tell you, there, there's another, um, project on that list as well, that's the Northfield Road Bridge. That's a different funding source, the state actually gives us all the money upfront. We actually owe them money, the project was completed for less than that. You would think that they have an incentive to do their audit and request and get their money back. So, yeah, I, I don't know when these things will happen.
Okay, and that's, you just went to one of my other ones. So that, on the Northfield Street Bridge, you're saying that that $401,000 that's sitting there is actually what's left over from what this, what the grant gave us, and that's going to go back to the state? Is what you're saying, or not, is?
Or, or something close to that, that, that's correct. Yeah, so, so that's actually really different because we're actually holding on, literally holding on to their cash at this point.
Got it, okay, yep, okay.
That's correct, that's correct, Chris.
Got it. Okay, uh, so, town-wide paving program. There's, from 2015, it looks like there's, there's almost a half a million dollar surplus and, uh, cost, the, the definition was said, cost to underrun, scope change, Public Works to reprogram. Um, any, I, I would say the same thing I said before, can Public Works, I mean, you, you need, you don't you need the council to approve any change, any redirection of that money since it's specific to a 2015 town-wide paving? If it goes to anything else, don't, would we, I think we'd have to approve it? And what, where we see it coming to are my questions on that.
Okay, you know, Jim, if I can, if I can start, and you can jump in when I'm wrong. So, um, you, you're absolutely. You're absolutely correct, Counselor Shortell. So, um, fiscal year 1415 in the cap and non budget for town-wide paving, the budget was $1,065,000, there's still $496,000 available. That particular budget year, um, specifically named the roads in the program. West Dayton Hill Road, Regent Court, North Airline Road, Contracting Lane, they were all completed. There's still $496,000 left over. The major reason for that, as Jim explained in his memo, is that the DPW director at that time had decided the, the scope of West Dayton Hill, rather than being a full-depth reconstruction, was changed to an overlay of pavement, um, and that resulted in the savings. Now, because it was specific to those four roads and they're done, that money cannot be used on other roads without the council's approval. I believe you're, you're correct in that.
Okay, and, and not just, we, again, to go back to my first question, we, we could, we could take that money and add it to the 1.2 and put it toward the pool. I could suggest doing that, I'm not saying it would pass, but I, I could suggest doing that, and I'm not taking anything away from anybody, correct?
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, of course, that is, um, it, it is money that we could absolutely use to, to do roads in, in this town, and if I can, um, next week, we are, you're going to see us milling, starting to mill and pave roads in this town. I've got some numbers here, because I was crunching, and I was actually very pleased, proud actually, of what DPW's been able to accomplish in the last year. So, we did two rounds of milling and paving in the fall. And in the spring, we've already prepped, because we had a light winter, we're able to prep roads, and we have our vendors lined up to, to mill and pave five more roads this spring. That's a total of 18 roads that we will have done in this one fiscal year at a total cost of $2.25 million. It was really an unprecedented year. If we have the money, we could put it into these roads. I have a list of roads, obviously, for the proposed budget year, there's 10 roads to the tune of $910,000. I would love to be able to program that, that $496,000 and some of the other smaller leftover monies from other paving programs of other fiscal years. We've got some heavily traveled roads that are long stretches, that money could go a long way and we could get them done.
That makes sense, I guess, what, what, I mean, I guess my question is, though, is there, is there a maximum number? There has to be a maximum number of roads you could do in one year, just based on the number of good weather days and the number of resources you have at your disposal. So at some point, I, I guess what I'm questioning is, um, at some point, though, you said if you had the money, you could use it. At some point, the money is almost irrelevant because you only have so much time to do the roads, right? You only have so many.
You're 100% right, I, I try to explain to people all the time that, that, you know, there, there is a finite limit to what we can do because we're a staff of a certain number of people, we've got other. We've got other tasks to do. There's certain weather days and, and like I was just explaining to you, I think it was a significant, it was a successful year. But in this one fiscal year, we're able to spend $2.25 million. I, I would say that that's probably the, our upset limit of what we could possibly do for roads in a given year is $2.25 million. Because, well, we did it. We did take advantage, again, of, you know, a relatively light winter. We were able to prep these roads for the spring. But.
Okay.
Yeah, in years past, we've averaged 10 roads at about $1 million. You usually see our cap non-request, you know, 1 million, 1.2, 1.3. This year is 910. But like I said, in the last fiscal year, we're able to complete $2.25 million.
Okay, that's, first of all, congratulations. That's awesome that we.
No, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty proud of that.
You should, you should be. You absolutely should be. And you've already, so I'm going to go through some of these, but you've already answered them in terms of, can you, I guess, just, you know, when I look at, I mean, 15 was the, was the outlier. And you just said, why? Because they reclassified, I think you said it was West Dayton Hill Road, but it's in terms of what had to be done. But, you know, there's, there's money left over from 17, there's 48,000, there's about 9,018. Can you just sort of say to, you know, what causes, in general, what causes that to happen? Why, why the road, what would cause you not to hit the 10-road goal in general?
I'll tell you what, if we had a microburst come through town, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do 10 roads. You know, I think when the microburst hit years ago, this department lost about six weeks with every one of our crews doing microburst-related work. You know, we, we lost a lot of our season. So borrowing things like that, you know, again, we're typically in the 10-road, million-dollar range with the capacity to do, do more. As I look at the, I, I add it up. I don't include fiscal year 1920 for leftover payment money because we're still in that year. And as I just explained, we've got five big, long stretches of road starting to be milled next week. So I'm confident we're going to use all our 1920 money for the pavement program. So what I've done, if I look at fiscal years 1415 through 1819, we have a total of about $558,356. If that is, you know, reprogrammed to the pavement program, we can, we can easily, easily complete roads. That'll probably get us another two miles that we could do in the next year. And, and there's some important roads here to do.
Yep. Thank you. Underst, that makes sense. There's in cap and now there's athletic field improvements from 2015. Is this one of the accounts you closed out? There's a $229,548 available. But I, I want to say that might be included in the stuff you closed out, but I could be wrong.
You're correct, Councilman. Jim Bowles here, you're, you're correct that, that was closed out.
That was closed out, okay.
And that, and that should have been reflected in your, in your balances of your report a month earlier. That's what I meant to be person retiring in office.
Oh, that's right. No, I understood. That, that's what I, that's what I thought. I, I haven't, I meant to go through that one and I, I just haven't gotten to it yet. This was talked about, the, the townwide traffic signals. We, we have $100,000 that we didn't spend in 2018. And now we have another $75,000 from 2019. And then, I guess, you know, what, what's going on with that? Is that, you know, are we going to be able to spend all that money? We going to get all that done?
Councilor Shortell, I, I apologize. That was probably directed, was it directed to me and I didn't get your full question?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm just trying to, yeah, I don't, I guess, I was wondering if it's, if it's you or if it's an engineering question. Just the, the traffic, the townwide traffic signal program. We have $100,000 was unspent in 2018 and then another $75,000 was spent, was, was allocated in cap and non in 2019. And it's, and neither of those, it looks like, have been spent. So I'm.
Yeah, yeah, you, that, that's me. You got the right guy. Well, what I, what I got to say about that is we have over 36 traffic signals that, that we own in town. Really not one of them has been touched or upgraded in, in, in 20 years. And we got to start putting money into these, especially the ones that frequently go into flash because the equipment's older, it's exposed to the elements, et cetera. When, when I was still at engineering, I had the assistant engineer develop plans and specifications to start that program. It was given to me frankly, an awfully long time ago. I was doing double duty at the time between both departments. So it just took kind of a backseat, but I, I think I could very quickly get a bid package out on the street to start addressing some of those traffic signal items.
And does this, I mean, this is probably a dumb question. I mean, does this take away from your ability to do roads or it's just different? You said a bid requirement, so an outside third-party vendor would, would actually do this work?
Yeah, this, this would generally be an electrical contractor that specializes in, it'd be a DOT-approved electrical contractor that specializes in traffic signals. So it's, yeah, it's an outside vet and their service.
Okay. All right. All right, well, I appreciate the detail. I know, especially because, you know, you're, you're new, relatively new in the job. So I appreciate the specific detail.
Hopefully, I don't sound as new as I am.
You do not sound new at all. You sound like you've been there forever. And I'm just excited about the 1.2 million dollars that I'm going to ask that we put toward the pool. So thank you, Mr. Bose, for that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, and I noticed that that 1.2 doesn't include that 496, so I will thank you as well.
Don't, don't thank me yet.
It will.
Mr. Shortell, were those, were your questions both for cap and non and for the six-year capital? Or do you have questions?
I have no que, correct. I have no questions for the six-year capital. Thank you for asking.
Next up is Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Counselor Shortell asked all my questions, so I'm good to go.
Thank you. And, and are you also all set for six-year capital?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Testa, you're on.
Thank you. Hello, Rob. How are you?
Good evening. How are you, Danny?
Fabulous, thank you.
Wonderful.
I'm trying to follow everything that's going on here. My, my colleague, Mr. Shortell, is a whirling dervish. I wanted to give you a new term there, Chris. I can't touch accoutrements, but you are a dervish. So according to the way he's been speaking, one could say that there is about $1.7 million between what's unused and anticipated to be used in paving. No, that's not correct. What about the, the 910 that's shown for 2021? You may have answered this. I.
I actually, I, I didn't answer that yet. So that, that is what we're proposing for the upcoming cap non 2021 year, 910,000 for, for 10 roadways. I, I, we won't have any issue completing them. Like I said, I, I can complete those and, and take on additional assignments with, with leftover money from other payment years.
Okay. I apologize. That, that, I guess what I, what I meant to ask then, where, where are we getting to 1.2 then? That Chris was talking about.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, anybody.
Okay, sure, I will. Thank you, Councilman Testa. That's the amount that is basically been freed up from projects over the last years that have been closed and not utilized.
All right.
I was asked, yeah, that was one of the questions that came across. I, it might have been Mr. Fishbines, it might have been Mr. Shortell's, or it might have been both of their questions, something.
It just, it just so happened, it looked like the 1.2 that's going to be in the future years in the budget.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So what you, so basically the, I know we see 2014, 15, 496. So if you added up the rest, the 48, I see what's going on now. That all sort of adds up to about 1.2 in unused paving appropriations to date. Which, part of the 2.7 you explained to us is the balance has a 331, 2020, right?
No, actually, no. The numbers do look familiar and they do look very similar. So I can see the confusion on that. The question that was asked to me, Councilman, was how much of, of the, is in the cap and non recurring bookkeeping fund that really isn't designated for any projects because we've closed them out even up to last month? And that's approximately 1.2. It's actually like 1,197,000. I, I rounded it up to 1.2 because, you know, we'll be closing at least $3,000 worth of projects. You know, when we close the books for this fiscal year. That's why I, I shouldn't have rounded it up, but I did just to try to make the nine of your lines a little bit easier. So I, I do apologize if I caused some confusion there.
No, you did not. That's totally me not, me misunderstanding what's been previously discussed. But we're all good. So roughly 1.2, of which that 496 from 2014, 15 was just discussed.
That's correct.
So that's why I'm trying to get at, how did, how did Chris, asking you to answer for Chris, how did Counselor Shortell say that that 500 could be added to the 1.2? That's where I got lost. Sounds to me like it couldn't be.
He's, I believe, I'm not going to answer for him, but my interpretation, just by listening to Mr. Shortell, is that isn't, he was inquiring is, if can that be repurposed through council action to another line item? And the answer, and the answer was yes.
Yes.
But again, I can only speak from.
If you follow that, I just, I kind of got a little lost when we were talking about 496, which could, at some point conceivably be added to the, this 1.2 roughly that you said was the balance of all sorts of outstanding things. In reality, if I'm understanding your explanation, that 496 is a part of the estimated 1.2 you said a minute ago.
No, it's not. I, I'm sorry, no, it's not. It's above and beyond that.
It's above and beyond that.
Because we haven't closed the $496,000 project out yet. If, if we had, I would, and I were asked that question by Mr. Fishbines and, and/or Mr. Shortell, when they asked those questions, my response would have been 1.7 million.
Got it. That, that answers it. Thank you. So Mr. Short.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Shortell is on the ball, that's for sure. Okay, I misunderstood when you say what's closed out and what's not. Okay, I guess, just as a matter of point of order or get back on here. Hello. Am I correct if I suggest that we could, there's this question about who, who can initiate the reallocation of anything? And during a, during a budget year, clearly, it has to be an administrative function to reappropriate, change, request, transfers, whatever it might be during the budget process. We can, this is, I guess this is the big question. Can we say, create, if you will, a line item, which in effect is what we're talking about here, for a certain amount of money? Change the composition or the description of this cap budget? And then if we go ahead and do that, is the administration even beholden to carry it out?
There's, there's two questions there.
Yeah.
One is, can the council appropriate funds of the town of Wallingford at budget time? And the answer to that is yes. The budget would, would be established indicating various revenue sources, appropriation of funds, et cetera, in order to, to accomplish certain tasks. Once the budget is, is adopted, then it does require administrative action to have those things happen.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, for explaining that that way. That, that, that's very helpful. I appreciate that. But it would have to happen during the development of the budget and the establishment of the budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Fantastic. I, I guess I'm just going to go on record as saying I would be very hesitant to redirect any money that's been previously or currently designated for paving, only because I think we're, we're so far behind. And that would be a hard thing for, for me to support. That's neither here nor there tonight. A quick question on the signals, Rob. Mr. Bose's report to us showed, as Chris was discussing, roughly 100 from 2017, 75 from 2018, we see 100,000 in the proposed budget. How much of the current year 645 projects in process or progress are signals? I, I didn't see it in the other, in the budgets. I apologize. Someone answer that? Jim? Rob? Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, if I understood the, the question, you're, you're asking how many, like, signal projects that are ongoing right now? Because there, there are.
How much money is in the current budget that we're in the middle of? That we're currently in the process of using this year's budget? That's not on Mr. Bose's report to us. He gave us past years. I'm just curious. We have 175 that you haven't used from previous years. How much is in this year's budget that you're currently operating under?
Oh, I don't think this year's budget had a traffic signal item in it.
Okay, very good. And that explains that.
Yes.
So we've got 175 sitting there designated for traffic signal replacement. You've got 100,000 in the mayor's proposed budget for traffic signal replacement. And is it your contention that you can, there's certainly a need for $275,000 for that type of work?
Absolutely. I think the need is actually for much more than that. Just to put it in perspective, as I mentioned, we have 36 town traffic signals then. One new traffic signal installation right now, if you were replacing all the equipment, $150,000. So you can quickly do the math and, and see that, that even at 275, it, it, it's not going to go a long way across 36 traffic signals. You know, we're really going to have to cherry pick the particular items at locations that, that we replace. You know, make the best decisions that we can.
Got it. At that price, you might have to go back to just using crossing guards.
It might be cheaper.
A lot cheaper. All right. I, I, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mr. Bose. And nice job, Chris.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
And up next is Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question, I think probably for Mr. Bose. I'm just looking at the sources of the money in this. And it says that one of those sources can be up to two mils of the annual town property tax levy. In this year's budget, do you know how much is, is coming from that? Or how much is coming from like the other, the other sources?
Or the only source in this year's budget is the pilot from the electric division.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Hold on, let me check, let me just check page 83 because that has the revenue side. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the only, the only revenue.
Yeah. That's where I was looking to it. So I just want to make sure I was looking in the right spot.
Yes, I, I was correct. It's, it's the only, the only revenue stream in proposed in the mayor's budget is from the electric pilot.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Fishmine, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, hi, Rob, once again. So I wanted to start with, and I, and I have to say that, you know, when we started this, I was going to ask you about growing pains and shifting from engineering to public works. As I listen to you, I forget that you were even in engineering because it seems like you've been in public works forever. You have a really good grasp on all of this. So I really appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate saying that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Are you aware, do we have any town, roads in town that are designated as scenic roads?
My, I've been here 20 years, public works less than one. My understanding is that there was a portion of East Main Street designated as scenic road. That is the only one that I've heard as folklore.
Okay. And in the past, up until about four years ago, we used to get a list of the roads that were going to be done on the six-year plan. Do you have that list? It's not in.
Yeah, no, when we put, when we put a budget together, I mean, it's very specific with the, the roads that, that are on that list. That list also goes to the planning and zoning commission. As a referral, I think it's statute, it's an 830G. Yeah, so there's nothing secret about a list, of course.
Okay, so we used to, and I just want to make sure, I don't think that that list is in here. In the, in the past, we used to get it. In fact, it used to be on page 84. They used to, it used to say townwide paving project. And there would be open parenthesis, a list of streets, close parenthesis. But about, it's about four years ago, they stopped doing that. And I don't understand why.
Okay, can I help you with that?
Yeah.
Well, the reason, the reason is certainly the list is available. And as, as Rob said, those roads are, are sent to planning and zoning for the 824 sanctioning or review. The problem with listing the roads, however, is that N conditions can change. You can have another road that must be done because of some, some unforeseeable event or circumstance. So rather than pin down the roads, we need the flexibility to alter that list. But certainly you can all be aware of the roads that are at this point intended to be dealt with. But, but we really don't want to have that in cement and then not be able to move to something that needs attention in a much more direct or time sensitive way. But it's not a secret. But we need the flexibility not to just identify certain ones, then, then, then we can't move.
Okay, and, and I totally understand that. And within that flexibility scheme, is it anticipated that planning and zoning would revote on that change?
Well, probably not, unless it's a brand new road we're putting in a road. Repair work on roads really technically doesn't fall within 824. But as a matter of course, we've always shared the cap and non list with them under 8-24, the municipal improvement. But technically, if you're not going to widen the road or a number of other identified conditions, it's repair of the road and it really is not within their jurisdiction to say, no, you can't do it.
Okay, I would just, I would think that that action, that representation would be part of our global plan of conservation and development, which we spent $70,000 on a few years ago, putting a new, a new plan together. If I'm to understand that planning and zoning approves the budget, knows what roads are anticipated for the next six years. But that you, Mayor and Rob have the ability to unilaterally change that without their approval? Is that what I'm hearing?
They do not know six years ahead. The roads are, are actually chosen. Typically, the roads are chosen in the current, you know, when we're dealing with a proposed budget. Then engineering and public works really determines what needs to be done in the next year. But again, what road is chosen is not a function of planning and zoning.
Okay, and, and their sign off on this budget is by state statute?
It's, it's section 824. But it really, if you read it, it doesn't cover repair of existing roads. It's really dealing with creating a new ball field, a park. You're significantly changing a road, widening it or other, other features, building a new bridge. Brand new road, those things, those things, yes, but not, not where you're retaining an existing facility.
So 8-24, I'm just looking that up. I don't know how long that is.
It's not too long.
3. 8-24. So. Right, so that generally says that planning and zoning has notice of capital projects in the town. And they approve it. Is that, that's generally what this thing says?
Well, but only certain projects do they really approve. But we're giving them notice of what we're, we're planning to do as a courtesy. But they, they, they don't have the ability to tell you, you can't do it. But they, they provide comment on.
Okay, and they're supposed to know six years in advance these projects, road, well, not necessarily roads, but bridges.
No, not six years. It's not a six-year requirement. This is when you're going to do it, you're supposed to give notice. But it's not a requirement, you'd give them six years notice ahead of time.
So why do, why do we do this six-year schedule?
Well, because that is a general outline of, of what is being considered. Oh, we, we indicate X amount of money will be dealt with on roads if they're a bridge project that we're going to be moving into. We fund money on a, on a annual basis to begin the design work, et cetera. There's a way of, of moving it forward, providing notice through that six-year program. What you're planning right now, but any of those future years could change with changing conditions.
Okay, so I've never seen one that actually matches. And I just, in preparation for this, just as an example, I pulled out the budget book from 2018-19 to look at what two years ago we projected and represented we were going to spend in this budget year. And in that column, there's only four entries. The budget that we have before us, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 entries.
But that goes to show how much there is actual work and planning being done and conditions change. And you have to respond to it. You adapt to conditions as they're presented to you. And what we thought two years ago.
We're not thinking now.
Well, never, I've never seen one. You pull every single book and I've got 10 years of them. They never match. They, they never even close. This one's off by $400,000. What we projected back then. I mean, on that particular budget, we said we were going to spend $1,100,000 on roads. The budget before us, we have 910,774.
But Craig.
You know, we're off by $200,000.
So we, we fine tune it to the actual dollar figures available. The electric money is not always the same. And actually, that will probably be going down because the consumption is going down. So the amount of money we will have to spend changes. There's also changes with regard to when we have reimbursement from the state. The state provides money and then.
And a lot of state.
But in the past, the state has provided funds and that reimbursement appears as part of the funding. Otherwise, we're limited, limited to about 1.8, 1.9. Again, it varies with the exact amount coming in from the electric division.
But I, I understand, and this is a zero-based budgeting enterprise sort of thing. We budget whatever comes in, which is usually the 2% from the electric division. We expend all of that through this budget. Right?
That's the design.
Okay. And just, just to, you know, bring it further with the comparison, two years ago, we budgeted that there would be only 1.45 million dollars going into this account. And yet we sit here with $300,000 more. I just don't understand why we do this six-year thing. I think, I, I just, I really don't understand why we do it. But anyway. We got more money from the state, or at least in the, the governor's proposed budget February, which I guess is still up in the air, huh? Were projected, Mr. Bo's, you were very kind to give us some information. Were presently projected, or at least we were projected to get 1.1 million dollars more than what we had budgeted for this year.
That's correct.
What?
That's correct.
Have we, well, I guess I got to ask the question to know the answer. We haven't gotten that money, correct?
The money for this year?
Yeah, we, in this present budget, the amount that we budgeted to get from the state does not match what we are anticipating to get from the state based upon the governor's budget proposed in February.
That's correct.
And that difference is about 1.1 million dollars more to the town.
I don't, what did my spreadsheet say, Craig? I'm having trouble finding it.
Yeah, no problem. From ECS, it indicated 347,685.
Okay, yeah, that was 1.1 million in the general fund. Yes, you're correct. Yes.
Okay, so have we received that over that additional money?
In, in the current year, not all of it because especially the ECS grant, it comes in three times per year. It comes in in October, it comes in in December, one quarter and one quarter. But we get 50%, which we have received, the 50%. And then we, we collect the other, the state sends out the other half in May. Oh, and of course, that we are looking forward hopefully to the upcoming week. It's usually early May. So hopefully by next Friday, we will have that fund sent to us by the state. It depends, each, each, each grant runs a little bit differently on the timing of it. That's just the ECS grant, which as you can see from the spreadsheet I sent to you, by far the largest grant that we get.
Yes, and the other portion of that 1.1 million is the municipal projects, which sort of dovetails into where we are now with Rob. But Jim, while I got you, have we gotten that money too? Or are we?
I, I don't know if we've, I don't believe we've gotten that yet. But I, you know what? I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I'll get back to all nine of you on that. I apologize, Craig. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if we've received all of that yet.
Okay, and then assuming that we get that money, the 1.1 million more than we had budgeted for last year, that is just going to go to the general fund, correct?
That stays in, that's right, that stays in the general fund. So if we budgeted, let's say, $2 million and we get 3.1 in actual, that 1.1 million dollars is revenue above and beyond what we expected when we did last year's budget. You're correct.
So why, let's say it was the other way around and we got 1.1 less. The council would have to be involved in filling that hole, right?
Not necessarily, because that would, that's happened a few times as the state has had some financial difficulties where the grant funds were cut mostly on the ECS side of it, the education cost sharing grant during the fiscal year, during the Malloy, some of the Malloy administration years. But anyway, there was really nothing we could do about it at that time, other than when we closed the books out, that either reduces any operating surplus we would have had for that year or it adds to any deficit that we would have had that year. So it, it's almost like if you had a business and you're expecting a $100,000 client to, in billings, and that client moves to a different attorney and hires them. That's not $100,000 that's going to come in for you. So when you close your books at the end of that year, your fiscal year, you're going to show $100,000 less. So you're going to have to have to fall back on retained earnings. That's going to be a hit to your retained earnings, right? Well, in our arena, it's a hit to the, the fund balance of the town.
But assuming, that's assuming that you have money from somewhere else that hasn't been expended that you can utilize to fill that hole, either from contingency or from lack of need for funds. Other, there would have to be an appropriation, usually from reserves to fill that hole.
No, we don't need an appropriation to do this. Now you're talking actual results. If we budget, let's say, $20 million for an ECS grant and 19 million comes in during the year. We don't come back to the council and say, okay, I need an appropriation or some other action for that million dollars. What happens is when we close the books, everything gets, your actual revenue and your actual expenditures get compared, obviously. And it actually shows you your operating surplus for that year if revenues were higher or the exact opposite, if expenditures were higher, you'd have an operating deficit for that year. As a matter of fact, I think we talked about this in the last couple of budget years. We had a couple of years in a row where that happened, where we closed the fiscal year with a, a, an operating deficit in the general fund. Because of the situation that you and I are talking about right now, the state cost, the state, the state reduced our, our grants during the fiscal year, like it did every municipality, by the way. So we had two relatively significant, if you want to call them losses. If this were the Fishmine Law Firm, it would be, you'd have a loss, right? And what makes up that loss? Well, nothing really. So when you close your books and if your retained earnings was $2 million at the end of the year and you had a $100,000 loss, your new retained earnings would be 1.9, correct? That's correct.
I suppose, yes.
That's right. And, and also, that's how it works in government as well, only it's, it's the fund balance. And that's part of the reason why our AAA credit rating was reduced to a AA1. I mean, that's a, bring that back off, but that's, that's one of the reasons because we had two, you know, two years in a row of that. I see. That, we had two years of, of pretty tough years where that happened to us.
So there's no vehicle by which, where we get in more than we had anticipated. The council can stop that from going to the general fund and perhaps put it aside for something like the community pool. It's the, it's up to the administration to put it where. It's the, it's up to the administration to put it where it wants to.
No, these are, the, the grants you're talking to here now are general fund grants. So that's where they go, just by generally accepted accounting principles for local governments and by statute, by, you know, legal statutes. So that's where, that's where the funds get recorded. Now, if the council during the year.
Yeah, but wait a second, wait, wait a second. One of these, the larger of the two lines is, is something called municipal projects, right? We're being paid for municipal projects. Community pool is a municipal project, right? We can't argue differently. So why couldn't that go to the community pool municipal project as opposed to going to the general fund?
Because then the, the, you'd have to make up two point seven million, well, this year it's two million or not one point nine million. You'd have to make up that amount in the general fund with taxes, because that's a general fund revenue.
No, but it's unanticipated revenue.
The amount that's unanticipated was the amount that was, that we budgeted one point nine for the current year that we're in now. And I believe we're gonna be getting in, I believe, I think you have it in front of you, is it two point seven?
Seven, well, the, the additional money that was unanticipated, that is a windfall to the town under this line is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
That's, okay, that's, that's correct.
And it's designated for municipal projects. So why does it go to the general fund instead of municipal project?
If we use, if we use them for municipal projects, we could, but then we'd have to take that revenue out of the general fund. It'd have to be replaced with other revenues, taxes.
But it doesn't make sense. It's, it's a windfall. We didn't budget for it. It's extra money. It's a bonus. I don't understand why there need to be an offset. What, what?
There's, let's get, and I'm sorry to bore you a little bit with this, some, some economic stuff here. Just because there's a, a surplus in that line item, if you will, a bonus, as you just called it. You're correct, right? My fans know much about it. But we, we can't look at every line item as its own separate entity to, hey, we got a little bit of windfall here. Let's take it and use it for something. You could, you, you could, can you do that? Of course you can. That recommendation. But I would say, I would strongly suggest that you can't just look at those items and say, okay, we've had good luck with this item, good luck with this item. But there's other items that are facing shortfalls. And that's what happens when you, when you close the books is a summary of that good news and that bad news, line item by line item in both the revenue side of the budget and the expenditure side of them. I'm sorry if I'm confusing you, I'm really not.
It just, it seems more policy than it is any portion of GAAP accounting or anything like that. Is that, is that fair to say?
Well, yes, we could, if, if you wanted to say, let's use that eight hundred thousand or the seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars extra and, and use it for something and, and you propose that, certainly you can do that. But I would probably say, guys and gals, why don't we, why don't we hold off and see what happens in the whole fiscal year? Because in the budget that you're looking at for twenty twenty-one, the revenue budget, that has the two point seven million dollar governor's budget for that in there. So you're actually receiving that benefit next fiscal year on a budgetary basis.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
I, I, it, it makes sense to the extent that it's policy. But anyway, all right, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you for the question, Craig. And by the way, your three cents are usually pretty good.
All right. Looking at the chat bar, I don't see any requests from the council for comment or question. Are there any members of the public that have questions regarding the cap and non-recurring budget or the six-year capital budget? Going once.
Chairman Savoni, it's Rob Ultra Midas. I wanted to remind you of the email questions from Mr. Brodinsky.
Thank you. Brain fatigue. All right. Questions from Mr. Brodinsky. The first, he wrote these, I did not. In the proposed budget, nine hundred ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars is allocated in the six-year capital budget for townwide paving program for twenty twenty, twenty-one. And one point two million is listed for the subsequent five years. Is this budget a representation that good faith efforts will be made to spend those sums during the assigned fiscal years and that monies will not be unreasonably accumulated? I feel like we've discussed this, but.
I do too, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we, we, we kicked this one to death. But I think it's fair to, to, to answer it specifically. So we are proposing nine hundred and ten thousand, seven forty-seven in the townwide paving for this upcoming fiscal year. I, I'm very confident we'll spend every bit of that money on our roads this, this upcoming fiscal year. The question also talks about, he says, one point two million listed for the subsequent five years. That one point two, we, we talked an awful lot tonight about the four ninety-six thousand in fiscal year fourteen fifteen. There were some smaller amounts in years after that. I think the bulk of that one point two is the remainder of the fiscal year that we're in, which we will spend. So I think just answering this question is, 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 is yes. We, we are gonna make the effort, we are gonna spend it, and, and there will be no unreasonable accumulation.
Okay, thank you. Number two. I see notations made by the comptroller that some purchase orders for paving and other items too are quote, open. What does that mean? I'm gonna ask you the whole question, and if you need me to break it up, I'll read it back to you. Does that mean that the town is legally obligated to spend additional sums on existing paving contracts such as the, such that a failure to accept more paving services would be a default exposing the town to liability? Or does that mean only that the town has the option to buy more services because a source of funding has been established by appropriations in prior years?
I'll take the open purchase order section at least. The open purchase order means that we've ordered, we have the ability to order a certain amount of goods from the vendor that the purchase order or orders are made out to. These are the unfulfilled portion. For example, if we have a purchase order for a thousand dollars to the XYZ company and we've only bought eight hundred dollars worth of stuff and we've been asked to hold that purchase order open, that still, there, there's an open purchase order balance of two hundred dollars, which obviously suggests that that project is not yet finished. Do you agree with that, Rob?
I do, and, and just to provide further context to, to this answer. So we, we bid paving annually. The Tuminus concrete is obviously petroleum product and it's there for a commodity and prices fluctuate. So we bid this every year. When we do it, at the end of the day, we're paying per ton that is furnished and installed with no restriction, no, no bottom end, no top end on how many tons that, that we get. So, you know, we're not exposed to, you know, liability or additional costs or not failing to meet a, a certain quantity. So we just simply pay for what we put down.
Correct? Third, what paving contracts are operative that require the town to buy more paving service? And what is the aggregate liability to the town if the paving services are provided as promised by the vendor? What locations, roads, parking lots are covered by those contracts?
I think Rob has already answered that question in that if he cuts a purchase order for a, a certain amount and the, the price comes in lower than that, we're not obliged to that vendor to pay him the, the remaining balance on that order. I believe you've answered that, Rob, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's correct. In fact, the, the way we do it, we're paving a road. Every truck that comes, right now our vendor is Tilcon. Every truck that comes, we get a load ticket. We add those up and check the tonnages that we've accepted versus the invoices that they submit. They're, they're always very accurate.
Okay. The next two are comments, and I will let Mr. Gross and Mr. Baltramitis decide whether or not they wanna respond. Wallace Avenue was completed long ago, and I think this was addressed. Despite that, the sum of forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars has been held for many years. I am aware of the comment that this money is said to be needed for various work items. But as a matter of budget control, this doesn't seem to be a serious justification for money appropriated in two thousand nine for a little street, especially when nothing has been spent in years. When this sort of situation occurs, the appearance is that financial controls over the budget are weak. South Turnpike Road Culvert is perhaps another example. Do either of you care to respond?
Well, I'll respond to just one sentence, that the appearance of the financial controls over the budget are weak. Like I said before, Mr. Baltramitis and I and Mr. Palermo, and sometimes even the executive secretary, Epi and I get together twice a year, sometimes more. This goes back to when Mr. McCully and Mr. Nylund were here for the, the public works director and assistant director. And it, you know, the comment is phrased in a very sly manner. The appearance of the financial controls of the budget are weak. Well, call me up and ask me a quick question. And if I'm at my desk, I'll give you a quick answer. But other than that, that's, that's, that's an erroneous and insulting comment. So I'll just leave it at that and nothing more constructive will come out of my mouth about that one.
The last one. The intent of the six-year capital fund may be to plan for a steady and dependable replacement or upgrade of capital items. Townwide traffic signal replacement might be an example, but when funds when funds allocated for a purpose pile up unspent, the system seems out of control. And actually, I don't have the rest of it.
Mr. Chair, I have the rest of it. It's Rob, I will finish it. So yes, but when funds allocated for a purpose pile up unspent, the system seems out of control. Instead of being a sign of foresight, the unspent funds seem to be evidence of the lack of a good plan and/or the failure to soundly execute a plan. The CNR, cap and non-recurring, fund balance is too high.
You might listen to my previous comment, that's all I'll say.
All right. Last call for comments, questions from the public. And there being none, this is all the business on our agenda tonight. And this will end tonight's special meeting of the town.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before you do, thank you folks for, for bearing with me as I get these answers to you kind of piecemeal. With all that's been going around here, I've been pulled into some duties that I normally don't have to, have to do. So a lot of it has to do with some reimbursements for some of the COVID stuff that's going on and, and working with my four divisions very closely on various matters in conjunction with Steve Civitelli, with Rob Ultra Midas and some other folks. Oh, I, I thank you for your patience, and if you have any questions on these things, call me. And Mr. Tortell, please stop apologizing for asking me questions because the questions and Mr. Fishbone, it's hot on the rest of you guys, folks who have asked. Verses are all on point, they're all great, and thank you for your patience in, in getting the responses from me this year. It's, it's been very weird here. I appreciate your time very much. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you all on Tuesday. Everybody have a good night, be safe. Thanks you too.
You too. God bless.